Okay, good morning. I'll be calling this work session regular meeting for September 9th, 2021 to order. If you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance and salute to the state flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico as the symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you, everyone. Before I move on, yesterday we had a meet and greet for our county manager, and I really wanted to thank the chamber staff, Mr. Chavita. Also, I wanted to thank Randy and Veronica. You guys did a great job, really appreciate it. Reason I do it now is because further I go into the meeting, I'll forget, but you guys did great. Thank you for taking that time and doing that. Turned out really good, so I really appreciate that, and I'm sure commissioners also. Thank you. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, there's going to be approval of the work session and regular meeting agenda.
Chairman, I need that you approve the work session and regular meeting agenda. During discussion, I'll remove an item.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Edwards. We have a second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion.
So, on item number 4C, GRMC billing procedures, James Baldwin, we'll remove that item.
Removing 4C on GRMC billing procedures. And I'm happy to amend my motion to include my second.
So, I'll move that we...
So, you made a motion to approve the agenda, but in discussion, you're removing it, so I need an emotion.
So, I'll amend my motion to delete item number 4C.
Thank you. And we have a second by Commissioner Brown. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, presentations. We have Silver Schools Superintendent introduction, Mr. William Hawkins.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee.
Push the button on the...
There you go.
Good morning. All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission board. I just wanted to stop by this morning. One, thank the community for such a welcoming environment for me and my family as we come here. It's been an absolute pleasure. We've been greeted so warmly by our school community and the city of Silverburg. So, I wanted to first extend my appreciation to that. Second, my other reason for coming before the commissioners was to thank the community for its support these past six years for the passage of House Bill 33. House Bill 33 is the Public Schools Building Act. It's a levy on taxes for land, a 1.5 mill levy that has supported our schools' both maintenance and technology over these past six years and beyond. So, the community has done so faithfully, and it is that time once again, as we hit November 2nd in this upcoming ballot election, that the mill levy is up for renewal. I wanted to take a few moments and just remind the community and the commissioners what the House Bill 33 Public Schools Building Act levy means for our community and for our schools, both for public schools and charter schools. So, I'm talking about Silver Schools specifically, but as well as Alamo Leopold. These funds that are allocated by the state allow us to take care of maintenance needs for our campuses, both indoors and outdoors. So, when you think about it, think of daily maintenance, plumbing, carpentry, electrical, the grounds work that takes place, outdoor, off the Mariano baseball fields renovations, La Plata and our speaker systems, replacement of the gym, the Harrison Gym, the remodeling at the high school. Whenever there's an issue that involves repairs that needs to be done for our campuses, it's House Bill 33 and Senate Bill $9 that maintain our schools. The operational dollars that we get from the state are what we fund our schools as far as our staff. Eighty-nine percent of the operational dollars that come from Santa Fe pays for our salaries. The remaining 11% that goes into utilities, supplies, student travel, all those areas. But those dollars don't maintain the facilities. It's the faithfulness of our community that has allowed our schools to continue to maintain. And in so doing that, we keep our mill levy at the lowest setting, $1.50. We don't raise it. We keep it at the lowest setting, as it has been, and we are good stewards of those dollars, right? Also, those dollars go back into the community. When we have to list an electric ship, when we have to do additional repairs to our schools or remodelings or replacements, we go out to bid to our community, and it is the community who we hire to come into our schools to make those repairs. And so, those dollars that are approved, they don't just stay at the schools, they flow right back into the community. As you renew the mill levy this year, it is not a raise to those taxes, it's a continuation of an approval mill levy that you guys have already approved, right? And so, you're not going to see a change from that aspect from the last six years. And so, I did provide, I don't know if you have it in front of you, but I provided a brochure with a breakdown of information. I thought I would say to you all, the word of listening to me, read it aloud, although I've been told I have a pretty good reading voice. I don't know if you want to find that out today. And I would stand for any questions, but I'll drop you to the back of it in the big red letters where it repeats, "There is not an increase to your taxes." And so, I just stand for any questions to the commissioners regarding House Bill 33 or any other issues regarding schools.
Thank you, commissioners. Do we have any questions? Commissioner Edwards.
So, I just want to say that with my other, with my Healthy Kids hat on, I've met several times with Mr. Hawkins. Thank you so much for being in our community and welcome, and I certainly will do everything I can to make sure that people support the continuation of the mill levy because the work that has happened over the last six years at Silver Schools is really amazing. The new facade and everything that's happening at the high school, that beautiful gym at Harrison Schmidt, it's really, we should all be proud of what that, what those dollars have accomplished for our kids and for our school district and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Edwards. Any other further questions? Commissioner Brown.
Just another comment. I want to thank you specifically for your inclusiveness of all public school students in the district. I really appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Best of luck to you getting going with the school year.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Anything? Commissioner Bullock?
Yeah, so, welcome to the area. It's good to finally meet you. I've heard a lot of good things about you, and thanks for coming over here, and thank you for that very plain, simple explanation on the continuation of the mill levy. Thank you for the flyer that you gave us. I read over it last night. Very informative. I think you'll be successful, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Just wanted probably just say the same. Thank you and welcome to Grant County, and you'll do an excellent job. I've also heard some good things, so really appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Mr. Santos.
Oh, I just want to reiterate everything everybody said. I've heard a lot of good things, and it looks like the community's taken to you, so welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to next item of the agenda, it's going to be the Assessor's Annual Report, Grant County Assessor, Mr. Raul Tureta.
Well, I would just like to start off with, Mr. Hawkins does have a radio voice. He's amazing. And he'll be on the show next week talking about House Bill 33, and he's quite entertaining, and he really has a good time on the show. Get this thing up and running. And for, to reiterate also, it is not a tax increase because I do talk to a lot of people. I do get a lot of contacts. It is not a tax increase, so it's really an help office for more schools more than anything else. Well, good morning, county commissioners, chairman of the board, elected officials, department head, and guests. And for starters, I'd like to welcome Tim Samoa on board. I've known him for quite a few years, and I do want to thank you for the emails that you've sent to us and all the positives that you have about this county. Thank you very much, and we're really working very close together, and thank you so much. Mr. Chairman, board members, I can make this 15 minutes long or two hours and 15 minutes long, it's your choice.
Ten minutes.
Five.
Okay, five, all right. I'll do it really quick. Yeah, we're talking about Priscilla. She, I said, man, she broke the record yesterday, so I'm just going to try to compete with her. All right, in the assessor's office, by statute, I have to do a presentation in front of the county commission, and it's our annual report. And I really enjoy doing what I'm doing. This is my 40th year being in the assessor's office, and it is just an honor to be part of Grant County. And for starters, I do have the current staff. We do have the assessor role, Chief Deputy Matty James, that's a complete amazing on what he comes down with his numbers and how he puts a lot of these presentations together. We sit together, we work very close together. And here at the audience, I have my chief appraiser, Misty Tohio, and glad for her to be here. Our title examiner is a member, Jeremy Paul, appraiser, Ron Gary, Arda Hernández, Denise Lucero, Gabe Ramos. We do have a vacancy that we're working on, and we do have a ten by New York, Albert Gaston, and we do have a ten vacancy on that one. So, let's go ahead and hit some numbers real quick, and I'm not going to go through every single number, so don't applaud, okay? So, all right. My goodness, I hit the wrong button. My apologies. Oh, my goodness. So, I guess we'll maybe...
That's the worst. What happens?
But, okay, here we go. So, bottom of the numbers, we're looking at 2020 residential sales, and you're looking at from the year 2015 to the year 2020. And since 2021, we haven't had a really gathered all the data. So, the transfer classification of residential properties looking at increase of 38.6% from 2015 to current 2020. And care of sales affidavits, where we actually have to send out affidavits on what the property is being sold to, the grantor, the grantee, you're looking at 2015 from 360 to 542, an increase of 24.4%. The work orders executed, and what that means is whenever they have to go out in the field, look at these properties, anything that sells, I try to get my appraisers out there to go look at the, at the properties as it sold before they start remodeling it, taking a look at it, and see exactly what has done to the properties. We had to suspend our field visits for 2019, so we estimate the office only to conduct field works at about 40% for the calendar year. Grant County is a pretty big county, so let me just say, I got to hand it to my appraisers. They actually do spend a lot of time out in the field. Misty Tohio actually handles all the field works and so on, and she does an amazing job coordinating. Bottom of the numbers on the residential sales, there's actually a graph right there where it shows the numbers of the residential sales. As you can see on the left, you actually have the number of sales, and we do have the ratios and inclusive. What happens is whenever a property actually sells, back in the day, we'd actually put the value on the property when it actually sold, and this is the time where we can actually come up as close as we can to market. So, thanks to my appraisers and my office, anytime a property actually sells, we actually, actually comp it out. We do a field visit and comp out what exactly the property is actually worth. It doesn't mean that you actually buy a piece of property for $50,000, and in reality, it could be a family member of good sale. We're putting on exactly what it's actually worth. Everything else stays for the 3% cap until the property sells, or we can actually get it up to market. Commercial sale, transfer classifications of sales from 2015 at 32 sales to 47, and there's actually a field rate from 16 to 2020, a negative of about 13%. Sales affidavits from seven to four, from 2020, 43%. Work orders, we actually need to go out there and take a look at a lot of these commercial properties, and I do handle a lot of commercials, and my goal for the year 2022 is to actually review every commercial property here in Grant County. Transfers non-investigated, you're looking at about 4% from 2015 to 2020, that's about 43. Number of sales, okay? The number of sales classification, residential improvements, commercial, vacant land, unclassified, totals, transfer investigation, and that's by doing the field works. And residential improvements, 638 in 2015 to 718 at 4.5%. Commercial at 32 to 47, so there's a little bit of a negative in between at 13%. The vacant properties of 90, and this is the whole thing about here in the state of New Mexico. We do get affidavits, and we do have, we know exactly where the property is actually being sold because of the affidavits. Because it's non-residential, we don't receive what the property is actually being sold on commercial, and I'm talking about non-residential, vacant land, or commercial property. So, we literally have to, I have to go with other appraisers to get those numbers so I can actually come up with a value. Unclassified from 2015, you're looking at 20, 2020, 3, 200%, okay? So, the total is 3.4%. And transfer that non-investigated is a negative of 11.2%. Building permits, and now I would just like to say, Misty Tohio, she's actually the ones that handles the majority of the building permits, and she does a fantastic job. From 2015, we have about 266 building permits, and now in 2020, we have 171, an increase of about 9.6% within 2015 to 2020. Permits closed, 300. She's very diligent on going out and closing these work orders. So, we're looking at about 48.6% in closing these work orders, and she actually goes out there, looks at the property, measures it, does a complete field visit, and she has a very, very heavy job to do that, and she's, is the best when she goes out there. On 2020, bottom of the numbers with manufactured homes, a tax release, anytime you transfer or sell a piece of property or change it over to personal property or real property, you need actually tax releases, and the majority of that is done by Denise Lucero. And we do have tax releases from 2015, negative of 46.7% in a new county of 30% on the negative, and convert it to real property, and they have to look through all kinds of steps to put it on to real, real property at a negative of 11.1%. The field visits from 234 to 181, negative of 34.3%. It takes a lot trying to find these manufactured homes, and sometimes I say to myself, you know, maybe just hand them back over to the Department of Motor Vehicles, but we have to value, put it on the casuals, and assess them. Protest, okay? On protest, bottom of the numbers for 2020, from 2015, we went from 135 to 127, and about 71% change on these protests. So, we haven't really brought very many of them to the board. We pretty much settle on these protests, whatever, we have to comp them out, and we really don't have any issues once they look at our values, and that's exactly what the public needs. They want to look at what the value of the property is. So, we actually go do a review, we review the comps, and we pretty much let them know what exactly the properties were. And if we're wrong, we do adjust them. If they bring appraisals, we do adjust them. So, I do have a very good rapport with the public. Bottom of the numbers on the agricultural livestock, we did show a negative on the count of livestock. If you look at the accounts of 2.9% rendition forms that we send out, we haven't sent any for 2021, so you're looking at 524 for males out, and it's a self-rendering state. It's what happens is whenever you render, you tell us how many, how much cattle we have. You tell us about the grazing, so that's actually a self-rendering state. So, here's a number that's quite interesting, is the livestock head count. In 2015, and I know Commissioner Billings would be very aware of what's going on here, on the livestock heads, you're looking at 29,000 in 2015, and as time goes by, you're looking at a decrease, and looking in the year 2021, a negative. Throughout those years, it's 12% on what's being rendered on livestock. The field visits, I do have Ron Gary that goes out there, he's quite diligent when he does his field visits. He's very thorough. And in 2020, he had about 292 visits, and it takes a lot to go out there. The Grant County is a very enormous county. And here's the personal property. Anytime you have personal property, you have a business, you have to render your personal property. Let's say a restaurant, you render the stove, the tables, the dishes, and so on, and once again, that is a rendering, rendering state where we get it from their CPAs, or they actually mail them in, we actually depreciate them out by year and from the cost and so on. Back in the day, starting in the assessor's office in 81, we literally had a handful employees where if they didn't render, I would actually go out there and do a complete head count on the, on the personal property. We don't do that at this moment because, like I said, we're just trying to keep our head above the water. The changes for the personal property accounts, 2.7%, renditions recorded a negative 15.8% and the recording rate is 14%, and the field checks definitely zero, so at 100% we have to go out there and look at it. Title examiner, and that's when a piece of property actually transfers on a parcel created from 2015, 84, at 2020, at 65, a change of 91.2% parcel combined. And what that means, if you have a property where you have three lots and they're joining, you can actually follow the document in the assessor's office, and we can combine them, but they have to be all on the same deed. Boundary line adjustments, you're looking at about 200%. We do have about 27 of them that we do that, and once again, Jeremiah Hall, he's actually taking some GIS classes. He picked this up big time because he's done a fantastic job. And not only that, Tracy, she actually ended up moving to Berniston, moved to Las Cruces, an enormous lot, but let me tell you, Jeremiah Hall has, has carried the ball quite perfectly, and I'm really enjoying what, what he's doing. He's very thorough. Data entry accounts, you're looking at about 2,426 per year, 2020, 2019, 2,415, and 0.5%. Hang on with me, you guys, I'm almost done. Here's the administrative task on head household exemptions, and it's, it's minus off your taxable value of $2,000 of your taxable site. You're looking at the exemptions from 2015, 156, to compare to 105, a negative of 17.1%. Veteran exemptions, that's actually 4,000 off your taxable, and from 44 in 2015, a negative of 20%. The fully disabled, and I went to the veterans and military, if there are down in Tier C, and we're going to talk about what's the exemptions with these veterans, and these fully disabled veterans, and I just want to clarify this. Right now, if you have five acres and a piece of property with your home and so on, and you have 15 acres, you are exempt only five acres and the improvements, and we are going to get with the legislatures to see exactly what's going to happen, because a lot of times, they want the whole thing exempt. You can have about 200, 300 acres, you have the house, but it's only five acres and your primary residence and whatever improvements on there. But we're actually talking about that, because a lot of the 100% disabled wants the complete exemptions. And so, we're actually working with the legislature, and I've been talking to a few senator representatives about that. And Commissioner Edwards, the low income value freeze, we're actually looking at 61 in 2015 and 2020, and that's only 2%. And on that, and I have spoken specifically on that, if you come in, you file 34,000 or less of your income, you come in, file it for three, for three consecutive years. Once we, you're on the system, it stays on there until the property actually sells. So, that helps out, and it only does, it frees the valuation of the property. It does not change it, it just freezes from that year, and if the tax rates go up, they go up, but the valuation stays the same. Okay, on the... Yes?
Sorry to interrupt you, just so I don't forget to ask this question. So, any low-income senior can apply for that low-income...
Then, you have to income of 34,000 or less.
So, fixed income senior on social security would qualify?
Yes, absolutely.
If it's under 34?
Absolutely, and you let, one of my employees, Arda Hernández, she actually sends out letters and, and they actually send out letters to remind them that we're actually doing this. So, yes, and a lot of times, just bring in your, your tax information from that year, and we look at it and what the income is, okay?
So, I think there would be a significant portion of our senior population would qualify for that.
And every year, I go to all the senior centers, and I do a presentation twice a year to explain on how they qualify for the, for the valuation freeze.
Well, and I'm thinking that a good place to have that conversation would be at the food distributions for seniors.
Absolutely.
I'll get with you and talk about that.
Thank you so much. Our inspection plan, that's fieldwork, data entry, it's in about a six-year cycle, okay? We count it 100% of the county parcel within six years, from 2019 to 2020. We only do portions of it because of staff situations. It requires 2.6 appraisers to indicate a task of full-time employees, numbers included of 80% of agricultural appraisers being applied for the continued review of the parcel of the special method evaluation. The obstacle is by not adequate study, funding, budgeting, and difficult unfiling ten employees. Trust me, it's kind of hard to get employees. It's a lot of work. It takes a lot to, for them to educate themselves to be out there doing these field visits. Suspension of field work during the pandemic, that was a big hit, so we're really playing catch-up, and we do have a big board in Misty. She does a fantastic job getting these people out in the field during the pandemic, well, not during the pandemic, but now to play pretty much catch-up. Here's some numbers of our goals, okay? In the second half, permits, protest, building permits, manufactured homes, general appraisal, we're looking at about 4.5% on the annual goal is 54%, and you're looking at the year 2020 at 4.3%, the annual goal is 22.5%. So, like I said, it takes, it takes a lot to take care of all this. So, if you look at the bottom line on it all, you're looking at the unique visits is 2,180 visits, 24,800, the goal of 8.8%, and we're trying to reach the 8.8%. Taxable numbers, reappraisal plan, general plan for 2021, 2021 and 2022 initiative is over converted, over 730 remaining extra features, and correct local market adjustments of 2,676 accounts, review 455 parcels for the special method evaluation, 2,600 general reappraisal field visits, and that's the whole thing that I wanted to really key up on. There's so much value out there. I know that a lot of people don't get their permits, that's why we do these inspections, where we literally drive the streets, and whatever's not on the assessment roll, we put it on the assessment roll, and it does build up, you know? You look at a cardboard, you look at a porch, you look at a concrete pad, throughout the years, it's actually adding value and tax dollars to the county, and it's reoccurring tax, okay? And we're looking at the task of the general appraisal, statistical analysis, and that's why we're actually doing all our land adjustments, land adjustments, our special method to put it into the system so we can actually do statistical analysis. Remaining obstacle, statistical analysis to create the legacy data, garden, yard, if you really look at the political data, local market adjustments, so we have 2,676 accounts affected, and that's 0.65% year of labor. So, in other words, it takes a lot of time to enter all this data. Neighborhoods, we have not really identified that very many neighborhoods. Statistical models needs the development, land value data, and once again, and this is one thing that we really definitely need to do with our legislature, we've got to get full disclosure here in the state of New Mexico. We're pretty one of the last states and nation where we do not have full disclosure on land values, on commercial properties. We really, really need that. I've been fighting that for the last four years. Parcel mapping corrections, we're in the process right now under phase one, under subdivided parcels, over 222 subdivision and 21 subdivision parcel and polygons. The final QC in progress is delivery in September of 2021. Very questionable because they're really, really backlogged right now, and they only have a couple of individuals that are actually doing that. Jeremiah and myself, we meet with them every Wednesday to see what the update is on, and let me tell you, with the parcel fabric, it is amazing what they've done. This has been a nightmare for many, many, many years, and we are going to get it done a lot sooner than expected. Parcel correction process, phase two, and that's where we're at right now. They actually just finished phase one. Subdivided parcels, okay, phase two indicates from April 2021. Currently, once again, we're lacking review and survey documents, identifying corners, refining more automatic parcel adjustments in process, and prioritizing over 521 sections of land adjusted by subdivided and more populated areas from east to west, and that's, and that's what they're working on right now. So, once again, we're going to have Bohannon Houston come in and do an actual presentation on what's going on with this parcel correction. And like I said, we meet every Wednesday at 2:00 and give us an update, and it's a very long-drawn out, a long-drawn project that goes on.
When can we expect the presentation from Bohannon Houston?
Well, when can we expect the presentation from behind Houston?
You tell me and I can have them here whenever you want. I can do it the first commissioners meeting in October, would that be okay?
That would be great by me, Tim, does that work for you?
Would that be okay there, kind of manager?
Thank you, Rob, thank you, Tim.
Thank you so much. And like I said, they're, they're very diligent in what they're working on. It's just they're taking a lot of time. The overall value on residential values from two thousand and sixteen is about two point one percent from four hundred and twelve million to four hundred and seventy million. Non-residential, you're looking at two hundred and four million from two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and eight is two thousand and twenty-one is two hundred and eight million, two point two percent. Copper, once again, you're looking at a decrease of eighteen point one percent. And once again, it's under production. Total values on two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-one, you're looking at eight hundred and five million at negative of one point seven percent, okay? Net new, anything that's new on the books, net new on the residential, non-residential side, you look at the overvaluation maintenance, from valuation maintenance to net new and you're looking at about the negative of about four point six percent. And you have received all this presentation on, so maybe one of these nights you can kick back, Commissioner, once again, you can read up on it or at least by time so you can understand what we've got to go through every time. State assessed property, and that's actually all the like railroads, telephone companies and so on, that pretty much stays the same. It doesn't really change from two thousand and sixteen, you're looking at about five point two percent. On the net new, you're looking at a hundred and eleven percent, especially with these tower's covered in. Valuation percent, valuation, a lot of those stuff is going off the books at about sixty point eight percent and the net new is three hundred and eighty-three point two percent. I went ahead and had, did a presentation a long way about copper production tax act and those are the values. And you're looking at a negative of eighteen point one percent from two thousand and sixteen to twenty twenty-one. And we have every single number when it comes down to copper production. And once again, for next year, I'll actually do another presentation. The oil control formula, and that actually keeps the taxes down to five percent. You look at the rate at about six point five percent on the residential side, revenue of two point six nine on the revenue of value of eleven point eight percent on the, on the rate on the non-residential. So you're looking at the revenue for two thousand and nineteen at five million. You're looking at twenty twenty at five million. So much, pretty much stays the same. The rate stays the same and on the non-residential, it's actually next up. Sorry that I didn't make it for the two hours and fifteen minutes. I apologize. Does anybody have any questions?
Questions, commissioners?
No, but you did a really good job and gave us a lot of information. I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, and once again, Commissioner Brown, definitely. I'd like for you guys to see exactly what's going on with parcel mapping. They're doing a good job, it's just taking a long time and they're actually doing it out of, out of an hour.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Rob, appreciate the presentation. I have a sort of a general impression question. I feel like the town has been pretty much buzzing with realtors saying that they're super busy and that houses are selling really fast and sometimes even for more than asking. And then nationally, of course, real estate is up fifteen, twenty percent, something ridiculous. Why, I realize we have a three percent cap. Why aren't we at that three percent cap? We're all the way down to two percent.
You know, that's one of the things that we're working on with the physical reappraisal and exactly where we're at. I understand that anytime we lose a piece of property, you're just old. Once again, we comp it up. It would be nice to remove the three percent cap, but I've talked to all the professionals up north, they can't remove the three percent cap, but we're getting there. And a lot of the properties are actually getting up there to market where it's actually what the value of the property is. So we're working, we're working it quite diligently. However, we definitely working on cleaning our system, putting our models in into our system itself. Yes, right now, it is a surge of properties being sold. It is actually a seller's market. And I play, I work very close to our, with our realtors with our data and information, but I agree with you there. We're getting there to get it up to whatever the market value is.
Yeah, okay, I'm not sure that actually addressed my specific question. I agree with you that something should be done about the three percent cap. That was not the focus of my question. Given that that cap is in place, I would have expected the assessed value of residences without that cap to have gone up maybe ten percent, but with that cap to have gone at three percent. And yet, what you just presented us shows an increase of two point one percent. And so my question, maybe you can illustrate it with some examples or something. Why isn't that going up three percent?
Well, once they pass the tax lightning with the cap, three percent, okay? We're trying to get there on whatever the market is. We're trying to bring in whatever numbers that, that, whatever is below its market to bring it up to its market, okay? It's gradually being done, it's gradually being done by sales, by appraisal, by protest and so on, to bring it up to whatever the market is. It's just taken a long time for we can actually cap, cut, cap everything out to be on this market. That's what we're working on right now. And it does take, it is taking a lot of time on that.
Do we want to try a different tack?
Well, we definitely.
All right.
That's a good question, Christopher Brown.
Yeah, it's a very good question.
So who, I think the secondary piece of that question for me is who determines it getting to three percent?
Well, Rob's office does, right? So let's take my house, right? I've got a house in town. The gap between the market value of my house and the assessed value is just getting bigger. It's not getting small. And I don't know if that's true for other people's houses, but I can tell you my neighborhood, I watch the neighbor houses sell. It's obvious to me that my market value has gone up quite a bit and yet my assessed value hasn't even gone up three percent.
Yeah, and I can't increase it unless it's, you know, unless the property sells. And once again.
But you could increase it up to three percent even if it doesn't sell.
Until it actually gets sold and put it up to whatever the market is. But we are gradually bringing it up to three percent. But you know what, that's a great question. And like I said, I'll have it in detail on the breakdown and what's going on on that. But just for example, okay, you look at the proposition thirteen like in California, okay? You have a house, Commissioner Edwards has a house of two hundred thousand dollars in the same neighborhood, it's homogeneous. Then you sell yours at half a million, no matter what, she's gradually going to go up three percent, three percent until we can actually get it up to market. However, you're going to be assessed at the five hundred, five hundred thousand dollars on that property and that is the inequity about this three percent cap. And it would be nice to remove it because we're at the point where we can actually put everything out to whatever the market is. So good question and I'll have some more details on it there, Commissioner Brown.
All right, so I'm going to try again.
Commissioner Edwards.
Okay, so I, I get what you're saying.
Got it.
About the above three percent. But we're stuck at three percent. But I think what Commissioner Brown is asking and what my question is also is, A, we're stuck at three percent, but we're not even taking advantage of that little amount because not everything is at three percent. So why isn't everything at three percent? And what I think you just said is because, and a particular property can't go up to three percent until it's sold.
That's not true.
And that doesn't make any sense to me at all.
Up to market value, okay? And that's exactly what that is all about. And that's, I was, we're pretty much against about the three percent. They did it because of SAMP and that was back with, with the tax lightning. So these people won't be taxed out of their homes. And that's where the three percent actually originated and we actually are moving them up to whatever the market is. But we have to go by statute on the three percent cap.
Why isn't, I think our question is why isn't every property in the county going, escalating at three percent?
Right.
Not that I want to tax people more. Where are you taking advantage of the three percent so the three percent?
We put it in the system and that's why it increases to the three percent, okay? Hopefully that we can actually get it up to market. But anything that is not sold, it does increase on the three percent cap, okay? And it would be great if we could put everything in market. But with that cap, we have to just only raise it to three percent per year.
Maybe it helps to look at the table on, page twenty-one is your presentation.
Good.
Because I, our understanding is different than yours, I think, about what has happened. You just said we are putting it up to three percent in the system, but that's not what this table shows.
But we, we do, that the property that is not sold do increase at three percent.
Then there's some other explanation for why this table shows two point one percent.
I can't play it back.
Page twenty-one?
I don't have page.
Maybe you're up there.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm so glad that you guys have brought me this up because we really need to work at it to actually bring this up to the, to the market and that's what we're working on.
It doesn't have anything to do with.
Okay, twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Thank you very much.
There you go.
Okay, so you look at two point one percent on the residential side and we're just talking about the residential side, not the non-residential, okay? You look at the classification of the valuation for two thousand and sixteen for four twelve, it is increasing two point one percent, okay? Some of them that actually kept up to put it up in market is the three percent cap that's actually removed, all right? So anything that's not sold, that is on the low market, we do increase it to three percent for, for the, for the cap.
How did this number end up below the three percent?
Well, because the, the two point one percent on the residential side, it depends on whatever sales are, the net new, valuation maintenance. And I'll give you a description on that one and I'll break it down completely because they're actually going to be like for net new, valuation maintenance. And yeah, we do need to, to, to look at it in detail to turn it on as a three percent. But right now, if you take all sales, valuation maintenance, that comes out at about two point one percent. But I will give you complete explanation on that. And maybe we can go into a complete breakdown whenever we do the presentation with the, with the parcel mapping.
I, I am also confused because it seems like if, if it can go to three percent, that should be three percent. So excluding everything else other than existing homes, not, not, not new sales.
Exactly.
So are you saying that all existing?
The non-residential, the property that not being sold, we go through valuation maintenance, we do with the permits and so on, we're going to bring them all up on three percent. And we do do it in our systems, but some don't get in because of the valuation maintenance and I will give you a complete detail breakdown on that.
Okay, explain to me what valuation maintenance is.
Valuation maintenance is, for example, if you, if you go out and do a piece of property, okay? We do, we look at the valuation maintenance, we actually do deferred maintenance. What is on the books? Let's say, for example, you remove a carport, okay? That's off the books, okay? They remodel it, we do it for valuation maintenance, okay? It doesn't increase the value, it does whatever is being brought up. So once again, we will break it down on the three percent cap on that. So valuation, hopefully if we get new people coming in with building new homes, adding this carport, adding garage and stuff like that, that actually helps it out on the net new.
So valuation maintenance means you physically go to my house?
Yes.
And see if I've done any improvements?
Yes.
And if I've done improvements, you raise the valuation.
Three percent, we can until the property sells. See, we're just going to add whatever we can add that's on there when we do that, that field visit.
Okay, so on my house, I've been there forty-plus years. So does my house go up by three percent a year?
Yes.
So the taxes I pay for this year are three percent more than what they were?
And that is just on valuation.
Not your taxes, the value goes up three percent.
The value of my home goes up three percent.
So that's not the value.
So basically, all you're doing is documentation. So when they put the market up for sale, then that's when you start adding?
And then not only that, we actually comp it out and put it on whatever it's actually worth. We don't do it, like, let's say you got a good deal on a piece of property or you're paying way too much, like Commissioner Brown was saying, the price is going to go to market. We're actually doing it, go ahead and put it on, comp it out to see exactly what that property is worth and on the market instead of what they call shooting sales. And by shooting sale, you put the value on exactly what is being sold. And we don't do that, we comp everything out.
Getting back to my question, so if, if, if I pay five hundred thousand dollars a year on my property, how much will that go up here?
It depends, is it going to be deferred maintenance or you're going to have a carport?
No, it's exactly the same as it was. This year is exactly the same as it was last year.
The valuation stays the same and we just add the three percent cap.
Okay, but how much are my taxes going to go up?
That would depend on the value of the tax rate.
Assuming no change in tax rate, your taxes would all still go up.
Three percent.
Well, that, that's what I was trying to get at.
So the valuation actually stays the same, okay? Until, you know, you add the net new on the property itself.
Yeah, but my taxes will go up, right? Do not change anything on my home.
Pretty much stays the same until the tax rate increases or decreases. See, it's all going to vary on how much value we bring in on copper, how much value we bring in on, on net new, valuation maintenance. It's all a total valuation and then that's how the rate is actually right. You know, once we did the presentation on two, three of the rates, it all depends, the rate could go up, the rate could go down. It just all depends, but the valuation just deals with.
The tax on my home depends on all these other components like?
Total valuation, total valuation on the non-residential side and the non, and the residential side. So in other words, you've got two rates on the residential side and you have one on the non-residential.
Yes, but I'm trying to wrap my head around this, just from my home. Yes, sir.
I recommend that we have Mr. Tuviaza in the assessor's office provide like one to two slides for our meeting, like he had, he had recommended. That way we could clearly see it on, and he, and he could go back and make sure we got all the facts on, you know, these property evaluations and if we're utilizing the three percent cap or if we're not on some.
Is there, well, here you complete description on that, on exactly the specifics of that two point one percent, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, and I apologize for inability to grab the presentation. To grab the context, so thank you.
No, not a problem, thank you so much, I appreciate it. And those are the questions, you'd be surprised, you know, the questions I ask whenever I go to the grocery stores or the big box stores and everything. I mean, that's all we pretty much talk about value and people need to understand, you know, what's going on with the valuation, the taxes, assessments, copper production, personal property, manufactured home, and all gathers, I mean, it's, it's a pretty big pile that we need to work with. And, and once again, you have to deal with the legislation that's allowing you to do all this. And once again, if we did have full disclosure, we can actually be on the market.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Young, thank you very much, Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Edwards, and Silas?
Thank you, sir.
We'll get together, like I said, in October. Manager someone out, we'll go ahead and do a presentation with the parcel mapping and then we'll have a couple of slides to completely break down the valuation. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Moving on to next item of the agenda is going to be proclamations. Consideration of Patriot Day National Day of Service and Remembrance Proclamation. I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion that we approve the Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance Proclamation.
Second that, sir.
Got it, second by Commissioner Silas, any discussion? Seem, can you read that? No discussion with commissioners, can you go ahead and read it, please?
Whereas twenty years ago on September eleventh, two thousand and one, the lives of nearly three thousand innocent men, women, and children who had been going about their normal routines were taken from us by acts of terror. And whereas with those we lost, held faithfully in our memories, we reaffirm the unwavering optimism and everlasting strength that brought us together in that dark hour and we resolve to give of ourselves and service to others in that same spirit. And whereas the pain inflicted on our nation on September eleventh was felt by people of every race, background, and faith, we remember the many acts of service that occurred by. we remember the many acts of service that occurred by coworkers who led others to safety, passengers who stormed a cockpit, and first responders who charged directly into the fire. And whereas America endures in the tenacity of our survivors and in the dedication of those who keep us safe. Today, we honor all those who lost their lives in the heartbreaking attacks of September 11th, and all who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country and the years that followed. And whereas in memory of these, as we vow to keep moving forward, let us have confidence in the values that make us Americans, and above all, let us stand as strong as ever, as strong as ever before, and recognize that together, there is nothing we cannot overcome. And whereas by a joint resolution on December 18th, 2001, the Congress of the United States designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day. And by public law 111-13, as approved April 21st, 2009, the Congress of these United States has requested the observance of September 11th as an annually recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now therefore be it resolved, on this 20th anniversary of September 11th, 2001, that the Grant County, New Mexico Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim September 11th, 2021, as Grant County's Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance to honor the victims who perished as a result of the terrorist attacks on September 11th, 2001, and our own Grant County service members, veterans, firefighters, and police officers. And witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and seal of the county of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this ninth day of September, 2021.
Thank you, Taysha. No further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Mr. Jason Quimley, do you want to come on up so we can present this to you?
Commissioner Carey, members of the board, I want to give you my appreciation for doing this for us, along with some other members of the community, like the sheriff's office, SCPD, SS, SEFD, Air Methods, and EMS as well. It's a multi-organizational event that we're holding there at the university, it's at Old James Stadium, and it's going to be starting at 8 o'clock, and it moves on until 11:00. I am asking that one of the Commissioners do attend and read the proclamation out loud to the, to the public that's going to be attending. So it is quite a long service, however, the proclamation is at the very beginning of that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I noticed that I did this in 2019, and I'd be glad to do it again, but they had me on the roster. But I also recognize that you're a former law enforcement officer, you are chairman of the commission, and wanted to offer you that opportunity to read that on Saturday if you wanted to. If you're unavailable, do that, I'd be glad to.
I'd be honored to do that, thank you. It'd be a great honor for you to do it as well, thank you. And just a quick update as well, Commissioner Billings also asked me to go ahead and bring this up about an update on the VSO for Grant County and Sierra County. The most recent news that we have is that they have moved into our offices there at the university. We reached an agreement to pull them in underneath the Veteran Affairs Office at the university. And they flew the, they flew the position, however, when they had the person in place, the person denied. And now they're re-flying the position again. So, if anybody knows, if anybody out there that is a veteran or a family member of a veteran, there is a VSO position that will be located in my office at the Veteran Affairs, or the Veteran Resource Center there at the university.
Thank you, thanks for that update.
Commissioner Jeff?
You want to come up and we'll present this to you, please?
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for that update. We're making it legal.
I was perfect, yeah, absolutely. I don't want to. I'm not too popular.
So moving on to next item on the agenda, it's going to be consideration of Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the Domestic Violence Awareness Proclamation. Seconded by four Commissioners, any discussion? Ms. Taysha, could you please read this one?
Whereas domestic violence impacts countless citizens without regard to age, race, religion, or economic status. As victims suffer at the hands of a spousal partner, it affects their children, families, and entire communities. And whereas domestic violence and intimate partner violence can have lifelong consequences emotionally, mentally, socially, spiritually, and physically. Violence harms the core of the human spirit and jeopardizes the future well-being of our nations, villages, and communities. And whereas in Grant County, adults and children continue to be victims of domestic violence each year during our nation's pandemic, El Refugio served a total of 434 victims, women, men, and children, and a total of 37 new court order offenders participated in the Domestic Violence Offender Treatment Program. On average, nearly 20 people per minute are victims of physical violence by an intimate partner in the United States. For one year, this equates to more than 10 million women, men, and children. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity for citizens to learn about how one, how one can come together to make a difference in a victim's life by being supportive, being a strong voice against domestic violence, and sending a no-tolerance message to the community. And whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month marks a time to mourn those who have lost their lives at the hands of someone they loved, a time to celebrate those who have survived, and a time to connect and form strong partnerships with El Refugio Incorporated and other community leaders. And whereas Grant County has a moral obligation to work to prevent domestic violence, address its brutal and destructive effects, and make preventing domestic violence a local priority. Now therefore be it resolved that in recognition of the fight against domestic violence in cooperation with El Refugio Incorporated, Grant County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the month of October 20, October 2021 to be declared as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge Grant County citizens to work together to eliminate domestic violence from our communities. And witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hands and seal of the county of Grant to be affixed in Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, this ninth day of September, 2021.
Thank you. Any discussion, Commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Rachel, do you want to come up, want to say anything?
Thank you so much for that. So we're here again every year, celebrating the lives, the survivors, and remembering the ones that have lost their lives. We don't do that just one month, we do it every day of our daily work. As you know, when you read the newspapers, this still haunts the families of the lives that have, um, that were gone, they're gone, but the families still are here, and they remember every day. At El Refugio, we have, the numbers for men have increased as victims, and we do shelter men that are victims. This last year, we had, I think at one time, we had three men with their children. And they go through the same thing, through the same thing. Our work in partnership with you all is very important. Because we're a small entity up at the hill, up in the hill, we need all of you. We need all of you to help support the victims that roam our streets every day. And not only from adults, but to teenagers and to children that we see come into the shelter that have also been abused by the person that's supposed to love them. So we will have the Proclamation Day, October 1st, at the Women's Club. At 9 o'clock, Mr. Ponce will be reading the proclamation there. We have a lighting of a candle ceremony in remembering the victims and the ones that still live with abuse in their homes. And we'll have some music, we'll have some prayer, and law officers will go, and we will put a magnet on their cars that says "Love Shouldn't Hurt." And they usually have that on their cars, like, some of them kept, totally fell off. You know, so we will have some of those, because that shows our community that we stand together and that there is a no-tolerance. We all have children, I have grandchildren, we all have children we don't know. And a lot of teenagers don't say what's going on with them because they don't want to break up with their boyfriend or their girlfriend. But it's happened, happens every day, we hear it every day. Teenagers will be more likely to tell us or someone else than their own parents. So awareness is where it's at. Awareness and education and supportive and being linked together. And that's what we ask, and this is, I always say this is October Nationwide is Awareness Month. But let's keep it aware every day that we live here in this community to make it safe for all of us. Thank you so much, and we do invite you on October 1st to the Women's Club at 9 o'clock. And then on October 28th, we will have Remember My Name at our Healing Garden at El Refugio. And this is when we invite the families of the victims, and we do remember them. We have like a memorial ceremony, and the family releases balloons, and we have gumenarias, and we have music, and it is, we have some refreshments afterwards. So we also invite you to that, and that will be held at 6:30 on October 28th. And on the 18th, I always say this wrong, we're, some of our staff will be going downtown to paint the purple town, I always say it wrong, sorry.
Town purple.
Paint the town purple, I always say it backwards. So we are asking local merchants to, to see if they'll put a ribbon on their door or on their window or some purple lights just in support of all the people that we deal with. So if you talk to somebody, local merchant, please encourage them to do this and to support it, that'd be great. Our numbers are increasing in our advance, before we used to have like very little people, or like practically just the staff. But even last year, our proclamation, I think we had like 75 people maybe. So those numbers are increasing because people are becoming more aware, and because it hits home. It does hit home. We will have two survivor stories at the proclamation. So, and we brought some flyers, they're back there, for all of you to take. Again, thank you.
So no, thank you, and really appreciate what you and your staff do for our communities. And I know law enforcement really appreciates it because they have another tool when dealing with victims, and they have helped, whereas before there wasn't any of that. So we really appreciate what you do, and thank you, and present this certificate to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Yeah, the one that keeps us hydrated. No, I'm good right now, thank you. So moving on to next item on our agenda there is Healing Regional Medical Center report, Mr. Manis?
We got to do better than that, I can't put my laptop down there today. Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity today to report to you. Before I do, I also want to take a second to recognize Taysha and for the hard work that she's done on behalf of the hospital and making sure that all our public notices are done correctly and timely and all those kinds of things every month, and just been a great liaison to us, and thank you, you will be missed not only by the county but by the hospital as well, thank you. I want to start out today talking about just some of the tidbit kinds of things going on at the hospital, and then get into a little bit of the, what's been going on at the macro level. So first talk about some micro level kinds of things, and then get into the macro level of where the hospital's been, where the hospital's going, if you don't mind. So first off, we are continuing to comply with the Public Health Order, the governor's mandate for masking and for vaccinations. I'm pleased to report that our employees, as of yesterday, as of Tuesday, were at about 87% vaccinated vaccination rate. We have had 25 or 26, I think 26 employees that have had a first dose of vaccination since the Public Health Order went into effect as well. So that has helped move our numbers, move our numbers up a little bit. Previously, I'd been reporting 80 to 85% vaccination rate for our employees there. The next thing that I want to report on is that we are going to be kicking off the Hospital Strategic Planning Initiative. That'll kick off October 4th, that's a week-long process of collecting, soliciting information from members of the community, members of the governing board, members of our medical staff, our employees, others to really feed into some of the data that we have on healthcare within the community as well to map out a long-term strategic plan for the hospital. As you know, we've spent the last almost year and a half working on operational improvements and overall large changes for the organization. Now beginning to really look strategically at future direction, additional services, needs of the community, and how we can best help fulfill some of those. We can't be all things to all people, but we can certainly do our part in helping meet the needs for the community itself. Next, I want to mention the CEO search for permanent CEO. We actually have a candidate on site starting today, and another candidate will be on site next week, and then another candidate is scheduled a few weeks out. But that process is well underway and will be, a decision will be being made within the next few weeks, would imagine on that. And so, just reporting that that's continuing. Our EMS tariff pre-application, we received a little bit of feedback from them the last couple of days on that, and they've asked for one additional piece of documentation which we intend to get out to them this week. And so that is still in that pre-application process, but is continuing, and we trust with that information that they've requested that we'll move on from the pre-application process. We have kicked off a new kind of thing at the hospital recently. We have kicked off a new kind of thing at the hospital recently, breakfast with the CEO. We did the first one last month, just opportunity for employees to ask questions or to get a little bit more face-to-face update on what's going on. We're doing those once a month. The next one of those is scheduled next week on Friday. And we're basically taking 1/12 of our employees and inviting them every month to the, to those sessions. It was lightly attended the first time and we're looking to increase that, but you know, we're looking for quality over quantity frankly in, in some regards there to really just have open dialogue with the employees. We've been talking about the launch of ear, nose and throat surgical procedures at the hospital and happy to report that we had the first ENT case done at the hospital on August 24th. So almost three weeks ago now, that had been done in five-plus years probably. We actually had a meeting last night with our surgeons and other physicians with Dr. Alexander, the ENT surgeon, and really kind of laid out, you know, what our responsibilities, their responsibilities are as well, in particular around tonsillectomy cases. And so look to be starting to do tonsillectomy cases in the near future along with the sinus cases and those other kinds of things that ENT surgeons do. And so we look forward to the growth in that area. We are kicking off an employee engagement survey on September 20th. That's a three-week process and that'll be the first time that we've done employee engagement in a couple of years. And so looking forward to the feedback from our employees on, on that. And then I think probably lastly here is a good thing that's been started in the community. We are now starting to train EMT advanced, EMTs at GRMC in cooperation and collaboration with the Doña Anna Community College. And so there are nine EMTs that have already signed up for that course. Four of them are our own employees or caregivers. And so they're looking to advance their own, their own career and training. And so we definitely support that. That training is actually being done at our main EMS station and carried out, as I said, in cooperation with DACC. Otherwise, don't know many other thing else on here that is really timely for today's conversation. I do want to though, transition into the macro conversation that I was talking about a minute ago and really talk about the hospital's road to recovery and the conversation that we had with the, kind of reiterate some of the points that we had with the governing board at our last meeting. And so if you give me a second to pull this up and make everything well and big here. Get there. Move to here. So our hospital road to recovery, it's been about a year and a half process, as you're well aware, and, and happy to report that we've had, we've had a great ride so far. But I want to take a step back with some national information and data to begin with. So rural hospitals across the country have been at risk. Over the 10-year period from 2010 to 2020, there were 136 rural hospitals in the country that closed. If you think about total number of hospitals in the country are just shy of 6,000. There are about 2,000 or so that are considered community hospitals, large community hospitals, and about 4,000 that are rural hospitals. Also here, it shows that about almost 900, 897 hospitals were at risk of closure. And that's really the graphic in that, in the second bullet point on the, on the left-hand side. So 25% of all rural hospitals in the country were at risk of closure according to this Becker's article from, from January. That, that shows just how fragile the healthcare system is and how fragile particularly rural hospitals are. Certainly, our hospital was very much included in that, that list of 897 hospitals that were at risk. We were at a, we were at a very dire point a year and a half ago. And Greg will talk about that a little bit more as well. But just kind of rounding out the numbers, and I know you've seen these, we've talked about them, but over the last eight-year period before this last fiscal year, before the end of June, the hospital had lost $47 million. These are from our audited financial statements. And so, you know, these aren't numbers that we made up, these are numbers directly from our audit. Only two of those years showed a profit and one of those, 2018, we could argue very clearly probably was also a negative year because they took about a $5 million adjustment. In 2019, that should have been actually taken in 2018's operations. And so we were on the wrong course for sure. At, at the governing board meetings and at the commission meetings in July a year ago, we through HealthTech identified and made a statement that we felt like we needed to identify at least $12 million in, in improvements to put the hospital on, begin to put the hospital on solid footing and stand on its own feet for the long haul. And this, this quote literally is straight from our governing board minutes from July of 2020. And then those bullet points are the areas that we identified for improvement and discussed at that time. Just for kind of a quick fast facts and then I'll turn it over to Greg to report on where we are now. But, but if you think about, you know, economic impact of the hospital in the community, we're about a $70 million operation, our budget for this fiscal year, round numbers of 68 million, I round that up to 70 because I'm very bullish on the fact that I think we'll hit 70 million for the year based on the trends that we're already seeing. Second largest employer in Grant County, we're still kind of digging into that, we may actually be the largest right now. We have about 350 FTEs, that's comprised of about 430 employees when you, when you bake into that, our part-time and PRN employees. We have about 100 nurses. All of that together equates to about $32 million in labor expense for the hospital. Now, those are big numbers. And, and you know, when we talk about the hospital being a vital part of the community, being the largest or second largest employer, $32 million in payroll. And when I say payroll, that's salary, wages and benefits, everything together. And $70 million operation, I dare say, you know, formidable in the community for sure and, and a vital part of the community. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Greg, let him talk about, well first, I guess, I'd be happy to entertain any questions before I turn it over to Greg. And then I'll come back up and round out a few more items as well after Greg.
Commissioner Bellis?
You know, something came to light the other day with some communications that we had and, and I think it's something that we forget to recognize is, you know, the hospital's not perfect, there's still improvements that can be made.
Absolutely.
But without the partnership that we had with HealthTech, at least we have a hospital to improve. You know, the financial stability of it now, now gives us the opportunity to, to bring it up. And I, I really want to thank HealthTech for that. You know, sometimes we, we just concentrate on some of the negative aspects, but the positive is that we're still there. Healer Regional is still a vital piece of Grant County that, that we all need. So I, I really wanted to thank yourself, the leadership that you've given us, you know, our great financial guy over there and all the people from HealthTech for helping us keep our hospital here. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that recognition, you know, it's, it's not any individual at all, not any, any one person.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Manis?
I do, I didn't know if I should wait till later, but just briefly, the very first thing you mentioned, 87% of hospital employees are vaccinated. Well done, that's, that's a great number. But I have some confusion in my head because we have a governor's order that dictates that hospital healthcare workers must be vaccinated before they can report to work. I realize there are some positions that that does not apply to, but why aren't we at something close to 100% given that order?
So the governor's Public Health Order did allow for religious and medical exemptions. And with those religious and medical, religious or medical exemptions, employees have to be COVID tested weekly and present a negative testing result every single week in order to continue to work. And so to help facilitate that on behalf of our employees, we've actually opened up COVID testing for our employees at no cost to them, three days a week, two hours on specific dates and times to make it convenient for them to get tested. They don't have to get tested at the hospital, they can get tested with the health department, they can get tested HMS, they can get tested CVS or wherever else they want, but on a weekly basis, they have to present to us a negative result in order to continue to work the next week.
The implication then is that roughly 10% or so are, are taking those exemptions?
That's correct. I can pull it up right here, we have, you know, like every organization, we've had to marshal our resources in this area and reinject them over in this area to now manage a process that we weren't managing before and to manage that week in, week out. And it's added a chunk of burden to us to do that, but, but that's how, that's how we're going about it.
Thank you, Scott.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellis, good, I'm glad you clarified that because I've had a lot of questions on that, so we really appreciate that. Any other questions?
Okay, I'll give it over to Greg and then I'll come back and wrap up in a minute.
Do you have something, Commissioner Bellis?
Yeah.
No?
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of our commission. I have for you today a recap on our fiscal year 2021 results. These are the preliminary results I presented to the governor's board meeting for last month. There's still four outstanding transactions, which is why I'm telling you they're preliminary. My expectation is that they'll actually get better, not worse. So key thing is that EBITDA, as has been mentioned, is an $18.7 million improvement. Keep in mind, EBITDA is the ongoing operations of the hospital. That's really big, like $18.7 million. Net 24.7, year-over-year improvement. Yes, we are in the black. Some people ask to be in a dial it down. Yes, we're in the black, so I'll make it that, that simple. At a $5.6 million profit. And keep in mind, for a large portion of the year, we couldn't do elective procedures, had a lot of uncertainty with COVID, uncertainty creates expenses. But overall, that's a phenomenal result. So kind of dial this down a little bit better. This year, for every $1 that we took in, we had eight cents left over. Last year, for every dollar that the hospital took in, they spent $1.31. So what's kind of driving that, that change, the critical decision that was made to switch to a critical access hospital and that conversion is really setting up the stability of the hospital going forward. I mentioned, I think it was a June meeting, that yes, this means that the Medicare patients coming into the hospital are going to have higher coinsurance. I appreciate the, the media that has helped spread that message. I do want to clarify one point. There's not a election or a checkbox or anything that the hospital could do to avoid that increase in coinsurance. We didn't make a decision to say, yes, everyone has to pay higher coinsurance. The decision was to become critical access. Nationally, any patient, any Medicare patient that walks into a critical access hospital has to pay the higher coinsurance. The OIG has done a recommendation to Congress to change that. We support that change. I would encourage everyone to call their legislative representatives in Congress and encourage that change, but we're bound to enforce it. We're bound to bill and collect based on the rules that Medicare provides us. I bring that up because some patients have started to get the, the new bills. Keep in mind that the conversion to critical access, you submit all your paperwork and you have to wait and then the federal government says yes, CMS says yes, you're approved. So then you have to go back and redo that period of time. And those redo bills are starting to go out to the community. There's a very large batch of them that's going out September 15th. And so as commissioners, I'm sure you will hear from those constituents, that is what it is. It's that higher coinsurance. Patients can mitigate that coinsurance by electing if they choose or are able to, to get a Medicare supplemental plan. We also have payment plans, we have charity assistance available. There's lots of ways that we can help mitigate that impact, but that is the key driver in the, in our financial turnaround.
Greg, will you repeat that? The things that people can do to mitigate that additional cost?
Yep. So you can sign up for a Medicare supplemental and work. That math is going to be unique to every individual, see if that makes sense for you. You can work with the hospital or billing office, there will be a letter attached to every single one of the bills that's going out the door to explain that you can contact us and we can set up a payment plan. We do not charge interest on our payment plans. And then you can also go through charity assistance and we have a charity program and we'll also help you navigate the enrollment into Medicaid if you qualify.
And you'll help people navigate through the assistance as well, whatever documentation they need, the application process. So what I'm really trying to elicit is that you'll do, the hospital will do everything possible to mitigate people's additional cost and assist them with that process.
That is absolutely our goal. Because ultimately, it's a, it's a partnership with the community and that's the only way I can show you this kind of result is by that partnership. And our Medicaid patients are a very important part of that partnership. So since we're after our governing board members, I thought I'd make today's presentation very relevant to your county commissioner hat and the impact that the hospital has when you're bond rating for the county. So I pulled up Moody's in their rating analysis for the county. There's a key point that they notated here that the fiscal 2019 year end, the hospital's cash position declined to a narrow 25 days. Key thing that they say there is at fiscal 2019 year end, so that would have been June 2019, they're saying you have 25 days of cash. By March 2020, we had 10 days of cash. So Scott's comment earlier about the precarious situation is absolutely real. Real question is, well, how'd you have 10 days of cash left? And that's because we weren't paying our bills. So AP had actually ballooned to $9 million in AP. So there's $1.7 million left in cash, $9 million left in AP, about 10 days worth of cash. Fast forward to where we're at today, much stronger footing, we have $12.2 million worth of cash, 72 days worth of operating expenses and only $1.3 million in AP. We're paying our bills today. Any vendor that works with us is happy because we're getting our bills out on time. That's a significant contrast and hopefully that helps the county with your next bond rating. Fast forwarding then to July, you can see our recent trends, we've maintained a pretty stable through the summer, which has been pretty good. And then for July's financial... And then for July's financials, we were profitable again for the, for the month of July. That's five months of profitability in a row, which is very good. Not to say I want anyone to freak out. We post a small loss or something. It is possible. It's actually budgeted that we will have some losses coming up. For the year though, budget is that we will have profitability overall. So EBITDA was $584,000 with a net of $234,000. And this stability that we're getting is allowing us to have a situation where we can start to reinvest in the hospital. We can start to figure out what can we fix. As Commissioner Salas pointed out, we know we're not perfect. And so now it's about using our cash resources, using our, our profitability and figuring out what else can we do to continue that improvement. With that, I'll turn it back over to Mr. Mannix, who's going to talk about some of the things that we're doing, or if you have any questions.
Commissioner Edwards, do you have a question?
I just want to say thanks for the great news, Greg. All the hard work that went into producing it.
Commissioner Baldwin? I want to echo the comments of Commissioner Salas and Commissioner Edwards. You know, I remember a time not too long ago, you were talking about the 2019, 25 days of cash on hand and then it fell to 10 days. I remember a vendor who was doing business with GRMC calling me from somewhere in Texas. And he said, as best as I can paraphrase, I've been doing, I've been working in this industry for a long time. And he said, your hospital is going to go bankrupt. And the reason I know that is because they're not paying their bills. And if my memory serves right, they, he, he said, I only let them get into me for $85,000 and I terminated services with GRMC. And that's when I began to realize we were in deep trouble. We weren't getting the whole story from either the former board of trustees wasn't getting the story or we weren't, someone wasn't. And it was, it was action that we had to take because I believed that the man was correct. And then the story I got from GRMC was basically from the man who I trusted at that time, held your position. He said, you know, I don't know why he wanted to go cause trouble like that. So we were getting some mixed stories. And it was, it was a hard and it was a frustrating time for me. It was for all of us, I think. It was, I still get a little bit anxiety thinking about the actions that we had to do to get HealthTech here. And I think it was a good choice. I think you presented some really good news and I think we're going to hear some more in just a minute. But thank, thank you, Scott and Greg and, and HealthTech. I, I think it's finally, we're seeing the payoff from the, the stress and anxiety that we felt in making the changes. Thank you.
Sure. I'll just say, you know, I don't stand here as representative of, of HealthTech, as you all know. I mean, I, I really, yes, I'm an employee of HealthTech, but when I show up for work every day, I'm a representative of GRMC and, and the hard work that we've done and the hard work that we have ahead every single day. But on behalf of HealthTech, thank you for your recognition of the, of the hard work and the dedication and commitment of our teams overall to the improvement of the hospital. Let me go down here, get out of this view. Come on. Why are we giving you this view now? I'm going to schlock you. I'm going to schlock you. How about that? You trick the system one way or another. All right. I'm not smarter than a PowerPoint, I promise. So one of the things that's been really weighing on my mind at the hospital and, and that I know we have to get right and we're beginning to get right is around our workforce. If we're not appropriately supporting our workforce and, and really doing the right things in that regard, we won't have staff to care for our community 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year for all the various specialties and specializations that we have. And so when I say workforce, I'm really focused in around our employees, not our medical staff and others. They are absolutely vital. Our volunteers are vital. I got to, as a side note, I got to celebrate with them their annual recognition awards ceremony yesterday. We got to take a picture and we'll be actually releasing that as a news release here pretty soon in recognition of all the hard work that they've done, particularly through COVID over the last couple of years as well, and their commitment to our organization. But that is a fine group of individuals from our community whose commitment is unwavering as well. Our workforce initiative has really had four focus areas from my perspective. Retention of the staff that we do have, recruitment of new staff to the hospital and to the community, changing the dialogue around the perception of the viability of the hospital over the long haul, and then really looking forward to how we can do other things from an engagement and sustainability standpoint for our staff. So the engagement is that, that fourth area. If we look at some of the national healthcare staffing challenges right now, and I really just want to focus on the, the small bottom right or small bottom left graph, those are the number of traveling nurses, the demand for those across the country from one of the sources that we utilize. The lighter green are number of open, just regular, everyday employee positions in nursing. And then the, the dark green are number of traveling nurse positions across the country. And you can see those spikes a year ago with, with the COVID spike. And, but now are even higher than that, which is crazy. And that spike went up in literally a two to three month timeframe there. It's, you know, there, there's a level of burnout. There's a level of, of folks who just are frankly tired, being overworked, nurses stepping out of nursing and, and not being replaced as rapidly as they have. And these same trends are being seen in other areas. I use nursing as an example, but if we looked at respiratory therapy, if we looked at some of the other areas like imaging or laboratory, these same graphs would be repeated in there. I just didn't chose to, choose to, to, to bore you with that. Those nursing positions are demanding, and not the nurses themselves, but these contract companies that are finding the contract nurses for us are demanding $125, $135 an hour for nurses right now. It's crazy money. It's almost an arms race across the country to bring nurses to each hospital. And, and so what we want to do as best we can is to support our staff and keep them here rather than them being attracted by what I've sort of termed the, you know, shiny bag of change to go somewhere else for 13 weeks. And we have lost some nurses recently in that, to that, but we're trying to retard this to not make that happen. This is a quick result of a survey that was done a few weeks ago by the Hospital Association in New Mexico, literally just completed August 16th. There were 37 hospitals that responded. Again, just the big graph on the, the left-hand side is a reflection and very closely reflects the same numbers for us at the hospital. Total number of employee, and this is in nursing as well. Total number of positions filled by our own employed nurses, 70%, 71%. Travel positions filled, about 12%. And total positions being left vacant, staffed by either vacant on a daily basis because we don't have staff to fill them or being filled by our staff on overtime or other kinds of things, about 17%. Those very, very closely aligned with the numbers that we see. And, and it's, it's worrisome to us, frankly, that, you know, we're only able to staff at that percentage. I don't have today's numbers, but, but recent numbers for us, we had 19 nursing positions open. That accounted for 16 FTEs out of the 100 nurses or so. So that, you know, those numbers pretty closely tie to these kinds of numbers here as well. So as a hospital, we look at nursing hourly wages and we weren't as competitive as we wanted to be. And so when we talk about reinvesting in our community and in our staff, we have begun to do that. This, this article from August, literally just a couple of weeks ago, talking about average nursing raises or rates in metro areas across the, across the country. I'm happy to report that we have, in the last couple of weeks, raised our nursing, nursing wages overall. Our starting wage for a nurse is now $30 an hour for a brand new graduate nurse. And our, our overall average for a nurse comes in right at about $39.5 an hour, which is, you know, puts you right in the middle of this group of Washington and Philadelphia. Frankly, I wouldn't want to go work in either one of those anyways. Much rather, you know, if I were them, stay in Grant County. But we just use that as an example here and a proxy for where our wages are. With the, like I said, with the, with the recent increases that we've done, reinvesting in our own staff, we're sitting right now at about $39.5 an hour. That's, that's really it. Our, our objective here obviously is to continue to reinvest in the hospital, continue to reinvest in our people, continue to begin to look now that we have a runway, right? We have, we have some cash. We can do some things. We have a clear path forward. We're five months of, of straight profitability. We've also shown you a graph where our standard deviation for expenses has been reduced by 50% from about $600,000 per month to about $300,000 per month. We have a lot of predictability going forward in what our expense side of the equation looks like. We're looking pretty good on the revenue side. And so with that, we can begin to reinvest, as I said, very comfortably in our own employees and reinvest from an equipment standpoint and, and other things. So with that, I really am happy to be able to, to report a positive story overall. We're sharing that as broadly as possible. And thank you for your support and dying wavering support for us over the last year and a half. With that, I'll stand for any final questions, I guess.
Commissioner, do you have any questions? You know, Scott, the only thing I want to say is, you know, what these commissioners said, but we appreciate everything you've done. I know that as, you know, commission, that, you know, we have a lot of priorities there for the hospital. But one of them was, as far as, you know, are the staff that you have and, and wages and all that. So we really appreciate you looking into all that. You know, the other thing is more for, for the public is I wish that we can have, that we could get 100% support for that hospital. You know, our hospital is very crucial to Grant County. You know, us as commissioners or governing board members, it's not about us. It's not just one person doing what's been done. It, it's taken a lot of our time, your staff. And, you know, we truly believe that, that Hila Regional is a key to Grant County. Without Hila Regional, I don't know what would happen to this county. I can't tell you right now with other hospitals around the area and COVID. You know, it does also affect us. It affects Grant County. So, you know, take care of yourselves, you know, the COVID's real. And because it may come, come a time where the other hospitals around us are full and we can't get people out there for special care for their weight, which creates an extra expense for families. So, but we really appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So moving on to the next item of the agenda is going to be public input. During this portion of our meeting, we welcome your suggestions and want to hear your concerns. This is not a question and answer period. Speakers will be limited to five minutes. Any individual would like to discuss an item and more depth may, may request to be placed on a future agenda. Request forms are available in the county manager's office. As indicated in our legal notice, participants must be seated in the meeting room or, or if participating through Zoom, they're required to register no later than one hour prior to the meeting using the provided link. And my understanding, Taysha, is that we have no Zoom input, correct?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Do we have anyone in our audience, Mr. Baldwin?
James Baldwin, County resident. When you speak, I hope I can hear you because back there it's blurred. A number of months ago, Commissioner Edwards and I viewed a parcel of land and the survey caps, aluminum survey caps set by a local Silver City professional surveyor were quite visible and easily visible. Last Tuesday, Commissioner Edwards had reason to call me and during the course of the conversation, she mentioned prescriptive easement. I have a plat for property that we have owned since the mid 1990s. Dr. Steinzig is our neighbor to the north since 1990s. We both have a prescriptive easement down the center of Paramount and Ranch Road. So I am familiar with prescriptive easements. Following Wednesday, I brought a document up for Commissioner Edwards and as soon as I delivered that to the secretary out here, I went around to the planner's office and I spoke with Mr. Daniel Aray and I told him the, the location of the property, the description of it. He went through his records, pulled it up on the computer. We both looked at it. It was the property. And Mr. Aray, the planner, said that from the survey caps to the center of Paramount and Ranch Road or Cottage Sand Road is public property, is, is public right of way, public right of way. So I will leave that up to Commissioner Edwards and the county on how they want to deal with the situation. My second question is, goes back to the, to the hospital. I'm having difficulty with Hila Regional Medical Center. I was not called for some reason to speak. I turned in a written request in a timely manner to be put on the agenda. I am on the agenda, but yet I was not called to speak. I don't know why I wasn't called to speak because I did not submit a request to not speak. Anything else is hearsay and cannot be substantiated. But I am having difficulty and I have been advised not to address the issue that I'm having with Hila Regional Medical Center in public. Today is an exception because I'm not discussing, I'm simply mentioning it, bringing it to your attention because I could become the victim of violence or something like this if it were to pursue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Do we have anyone else in public that would like to speak? Okay, seen none. We'll move on to county reports. Mr. Villa?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I really don't have a report. I just want to say that recognizing those first responders from 9/11. And I want to thank all the first responders in Grant County for the commitment and the vote that they take to serve our community. So including law enforcement and RMS and volunteer fire departments. But this is not unless you have any questions, that's all I have for now.
Do we have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Villa.
I do, sorry, I wanted to recognize Taysha too. Thank you for all you did. I think you're going to be really missed by a lot of people and so good luck in your ventures. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Nasola, do you have a report?
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Here's the director's report. Currently at the Grant County Detention Center, we have five vacancies. We do have two new hire officers that are in training this time. And we did conduct interviews last week on officer positions. We are in the process of offering two of the interviewees a position at the detention center. I'd like to thank County Manager Zamora for taking the time in his busy schedule to come meet with us. He's already met with us approximately four times and been out to the facility twice to give us some insight and direction. I also want to thank Renee Calaway and- I also want to thank Renee Calaway and Linda Voskis. They worked really hard at bringing up the officer, beginning officers' pay within budget so we could pay them more to start with, and we are looking at even raising it more within the budget. We are going to participate tomorrow in the job fair put on by the Workforce Solutions here at the Convention Center. Mr. Zamora did put us in touch also with the Transition Center in Fort Bliss, where the active soldiers are transitioning out of service, so we can have job postings there. And we do interact with the community and do inform them that we are hiring and we give them our cards, and we do have some interest in that also. Our focus right now is going to be to keep on recruiting, to become fully staffed, and to just keep on implementing and upgrading our training programs. So we train not only those that are new hires, but also the refresher courses in the current staff that we have. And I'm very excited that we're going to be looking at ways to keep our staff that we currently have and reviewing a step plan for pay. Our training update, Sergeant Galindo did attend harassment prevention training hosted by New Mexico Counties, and myself and Sergeant Galindo did get recertified in the less lethal shotgun by Lieutenant Michael Bonifat, who was a master instructor in that. Sergeant Galindo is also in process of conducting the one hundred and sixty hours of basic detention officer course with the two newly hired officers, and he is continuing training with the five officers who have completed the one hundred and sixty basic officer course and are now working the floor within the facility. COVID updates, as of Monday, August thirtieth, there was one positive COVID case within the facility. We had one detention officer test positive and was under the COVID protocol. Just for a quick update, that officer has completed the COVID protocol and he is back at work. Another update, we did have one more, one other officer test positive, so he is in the COVID protocol at this time. He will complete the COVID protocol on Sunday and be able to return to work on his next scheduled shift, which would be Wednesday. We also do have one detainee who has tested positive. He is completing the COVID protocol on the eleventh of this month, which would be Saturday. We do do surveillance testing every week at the detention center, and if we do have a positive, we go to a hundred percent testing. We did have some issues on delivering of the test kits because of logistics and transportation, but we did talk to David Scryce with, David Savage, excuse me, with State of New Mexico, and he is helping us and they're expediting some test kits so we could test at a hundred percent. We do have rapid tests currently, and we do have a PCR test. We should be getting this week so we can complete our hundred percent testing. The RISE program, I met with Christine DeBolt and Christie Ozero while they were this morning to show us a part, and I do appreciate everything that they do. We did a quick review of this past year and where we're going from there. We do want to implement more services. I know that you guys are going to look at possibly having a therapist to grow substance abuse counseling within the facility with the RISE program, so that will expand services. We are looking at being able to utilize the program room here shortly within the next month. We did go over the staff from September to June of this year, September twenty twenty. There were thirty-five detainees in the RISE program, twenty-two of them transitioned out of the detention center into the community, thirteen of those were transferred to DOC. Nine individuals continue to use the peer support community after transition. They do have a part-time community, small peer support specialist that works within the community and works with the detainees that have left the detention center. We did have six individuals that were rearrested. For August, we have nine participants in the RISE program, and we did start facilitating recovery groups, which we have eight participating, which is five females, I mean, three females and five males. Christie does meet with the APOs weekly, does attend the DWI compliance meetings, and she's currently meeting with Oxford House to explore possible cooperations with the Recognition and Award Program. This month, I would like to give all the staff, the admin staff and detention staff recognition for all they do every day. This month has been a busy month, and with the facility being short-staffed, all our staff have come together and made sure that each and every shift is manned and taken care of. I appreciate all the staff stepping up and assisting where needed and coming in on their days off or staying late or coming in early. The officers have a very difficult job, and I want to let them know I appreciate how hard they work and the positive changes I've seen being done. Arrest totals for the month of August, SCPD have fifty-nine arrests, GCSO twenty-seven, State Police eleven, Bay Area Police Department eight, Santa Clara Police Department one, and the Grant County Detentions, three, which individuals are sent to the facility so they show up at the facility to turn themselves in to do their time. Court transports, as of Monday, August thirtieth, the facility has fifty-five detainees awaiting the court proceedings, ten sent to the facility, five pending transport to the Department of Corrections, and six awaiting transport to rehab. As of Monday, August thirtieth, four detainees were placed in our special management. Three male detainees were on wellness observation, and one female detainee was also on wellness observation. The population of detainees for the facility for Monday, August thirtieth, was seventy-six, and the average daily population for the month of August was seventy-one. And this morning, we had seventy-two in our population with one being released when I was leaving to this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Nasola. Do you have any questions for? You were done, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner Brown.
Thank you for the report, Mr. Nasola. Your mention of a couple of our employees who tested positive makes me wonder, what is the percentage of our staff at the detention center that has been vaccinated? Do you know that?
Yes, actually, I submitted because we keep in contact with New Mexico Counties, and they asked for a weekly, so I just submitted the weekly on Tuesday. Out of the twenty-four staff we currently have, twelve are vaccinated, and of our detainees, at the time, we had seventy detainees and fifty-nine were vaccinated.
So half of the staff has been vaccinated?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome, Commissioner. Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Seen none other questions before I go to Mr. Zamora, County Manager. Any other county employee have a report? Ms. Shook?
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to give you an update on some of the projects the county has currently. We have a Bandone Drive as a pre-construction meeting is scheduled for September fifteenth, and construction should start soon after. We have the Baton ADA and Drainage Improvement Project. Construction is underway for that one, and the completion date is set for October twenty-fifth. We have the Baton Memorial Project. That one will go to, we have a pre-bid conference scheduled for September fifteenth and construction scheduled for November, estimated completion about February. We have our Trails and Outdoor Recreation Master Planning. So far, the survey that has been out has received about three hundred and thirty-four responses, and there's a healthy variety of ages taking the survey. The stakeholder and group meetings are being scheduled for this month and next month. The SE Group, who is the company that's working on this master plan, does plan on presenting to the commission next month to give you an update on the project. Grant County was awarded two New Mexico DOT projects. The Truck Bypass was awarded for three million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, and the Flemington Flood Road Project was awarded for six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We have two colonial resolutions that are on the agenda for today for Arenas Valley Road and North Hurley Phase Three. We should be closing on those loan agreements on October fifteenth. We have the Baton Trails Project. We're going to be working on getting some quotes for construction of these trails. The deadline for the project is June twenty-second, so we're on track with that. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Any question?
Good news.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any other county employee have a report? Seen none, County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. Just over the last month, I've had the opportunity to meet a number of county employees, meet with directors and deputies and others within the county, and I appreciate all their support and their efforts that they continue to do. I've been looking at assessing and seeing where we stand and taking a look at where I think we need to head, and I look forward to meeting with the commission, and we'll discuss any other goals that are priorities to the commission as well, and we'll develop a plan from there and look at the year, next, you know, few years hopefully, and we can move forward on any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Zamora. Moving on to elected official reports. Am I good?
You're doing fine. No, it's still in time, sorry.
Moving on to elected official reports, our treasurer, Mr. Khan.
Good morning, Commissioner Poncet, member of the commission, County Managers Zamora, staff, public officials, and guests. On the report that I handed to you, that's titled "The Tax Maintenance Report," the total taxes collected for the month of August of 2020 tax rule is thirty-five thousand, forty-seven dollars and eighteen cents, which left the county at a collection percentage of ninety-three point four four percent for 2020. For the total 2020 tax rule so far, eulogy million, sixty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and seventy-four cents of taxes have been collected, and seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifteen cents remains uncollected. The total percentage collected for the ten-year collection as of August thirty-first, 2021, is at a ninety-five point six seven percent, which a total of one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and, I'm sorry, one hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seven, one hundred and fourteen million, three hundred and seven dollars and seven hundred and four, can't get that, sorry about that. One hundred and fourteen thousand, three hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred four point two seven taxes have been collected in August, that leaves a total uncollected balance of taxes, five million, one hundred and seventy, one thousand, three hundred and five dollars and five cents balance.
That takes two million.
On the distribution worksheet that I also provided to you, a total of twenty-two thousand, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-two cents will be distributed to the local municipalities, school districts, special entities, and state of New Mexico counties. The county's portion of distribution, we see revenues of twenty-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and twenty-nine cents, which twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents went to the general fund. In August, the county had a visit from the Property Tax Division. The representative on behalf of the PTD office read tact and will proceed on the tax hall sometime this fall. The county website, under the Treasures tab, is a banner that anyone can access to obtain properties that will be on the list for auction. As of today, I checked, the PTD website has not added any lists on their website. Anyone interested, willing to contact the Treasures Office or online to obtain any auction, this one of the PTD publishes it online. As I mentioned, this last Tuesday, I have sent communications to the Property Tax Division to obtain an approval for the 2021 tax rule that will be imported in November. I have not obtained a final approval as I'm anxiously awaiting so I can communicate with the whole county with the set permanent dates I have proposed. So far, the tentative dates are set as November the twenty-fourth to import the tax rule, December first. Tax bills will be mailed out December tenth, first half will be due with the January tenth, due before penalty and interest is assessed. And again, second half taxes will remain the same starting April tenth with the May tenth, with interest and penalty being accessed if they're not paid. We're not the only county affected by this. There's a total of sixteen counties within the state that is having to do this, so we're not the only county having to do this with the local election law. Again, I would like to thank Chairman Poncet and members of the commission in regarding, including the COVID-safe Practice Project for the Administration Building as part of the top ten of the ARFUD project list. I would also like to thank Randivia and Jason Locka, as they have both came in the Treasures Office to meet with me regarding, in regards to keeping the Treasures Office COVID-safe. Not only this is, not only would this continue to be a COVID-safe environment for the taxpayers that enter the Treasures Office as well as my staff, this will also address other issues I have for the office regarding the current layout in front of the office. This would be a good permanent renovation that would be beneficial for years to come. May I stand for any questions?
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Thank you. Do we have any questions? No. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. First, I'd like to start with a summary of the Sheriff's Office for the month of August. The Sheriff's Office completed comprehensive in-house, state-mandated biannual training, which included House Rule ninety-three, mental illness recognition, response, and CIT training in August. We will conduct a makeup session next month as the 2021 biannual cycle comes to a close. Two deputies are scheduled to attend their instructor certification training in August this month. This is a very comprehensive eighty-hour course, which is an evidence-based curriculum developed for nationwide DARE program instructors. Staff, including myself, who have attended this course, report having homework every night and intensive classroom activities daily. Federally funded narcotics trafficking training, Desert Snow Wolf, will be offered in Silver City at no cost. We are sending multiple staff members. At this first-rate training being offered locally for free, we are making very good progress towards providing all certified staff, basic CIT in persons with mental illness training with the goal of a hundred percent completion. We continue to send our CIT instructors to advanced trainings as the subject matter is volatile and in constant flux due to the ever-changing nature of our work. I would like to thank Manager Tim Zamora and the members of the commission, Commissioner Edwards, for providing funding for the CIT training and for the establishment of the professional clinician back program that we hope to have in place. The CIT program will establish training and responses externally as we encounter these situations in the field, and internally to support our staff in the aftermath of a critical incident or any other crisis on and off the job. The Sheriff's Office provided active shooter training at the District Attorney's Office recently, and we are currently in the planning process to provide this training to silver schools. As a quick refresher, this active shooter training is an evidence-based curriculum known as ALIS. ALIS stands for Alert, Look, Down, Inform, Counter, Evaluate, which is focused on providing practical responses for the first critical minutes of an incident, which actions occur to save lives. In cases of interest, and I know I repeat myself this month in open legislation that the governor will hear this, obviously, in the first part of September, I have brought to significant increases in serious and reviving crime activities for the Sheriff's Office. The majority of the suspects in these incidents are already convicted felons, under facing felony charges, and out of custody and unsecured bonds. Once again, the current system of release, everybody regardless of charges, is a massive miscalculation and dysfunction of criminal justice systems, reform that the community and the victims continue to suffer. We have been told that the state legislature is now considering its options to correct the current situation, which the New Mexico Supreme Court largely created its own interpretation in the New Mexico Consultational Amendment, which the voters approved years ago. Law enforcement is doing its part, and hopefully the legislator will overrule the New Mexico Supreme Court insane interpretation of what was sold to voters as something popular or opposite. The following are some examples of these incidents which recently occurred. The CIT manor subject suicide with weapon. Sheriff's Office CIT negotiator was called out to the scene and successfully deescalated the subject to a peaceful outcome with no injuries or violence. In regards to this incident, we actually had our patrol deputies who had gone, and the subject was contemplating suicide with a rifle to the bottom of his chin. Bringing out one of our Corporal Jordan, who's part of our advance team with the crisis intervention, was able to intervene, deescalate the situation, build a rapport with the subject, and was able to transport him to the hospital where the needed medical treatment that he needed was provided due to the CIT program. So speaking with Commissioner Billings, Commissioner Edwards, and all the managers of Zamora, I greatly appreciate it because CIT is, it's an important function in law enforcement in these days, and I know the governor and all are pushing on CIT. I'm not sure if it's going to be unfunded, like everything else is or not, but I'm glad my office is taking the first step, and we're looking forward, and we need a better, the people here in Grant County. Two vehicles versus pedestrian fatalities, in both cases, subjects possibly under the influence or walking in and out of traffic. influence were walking in and out of traffic lanes on US Highway 180 East and struck by one or more vehicles. Both died as a result of their injuries. The Sheriff's Office is continuing coverage in the mining district, particularly in Barrett and Duke, and Barrett, due to both municipal agencies being either non-existent or severely personnel depleted. It is unknown when these agencies will resume normal operation. The court security is currently understaffed due to an employee being on extended leave. In regards to court security, currently, the Sheriff's Office employs two full-time special deputies, non-certified, who function as court security officers. Given the fact that one is on leave for an undetermined period, I have been forced to use deputies on overtime to fulfill our responsibilities at the courthouse. Please consider the following, as I believe the county needs to fund a third part-time court security position. The six judicial district court contains four courtrooms, judges' offices and staff, the clerk's office, court administration offices, the DA's office, pre-prosecution services, drug court, and more. In the past, and if we go back into COVID, both magistrate courts are now holding bench and jury trials at the district courthouse sharing jury pools. Two court security officers is wholly inadequate to provide for minimum coverage, given vacation and sick leave, employee turnover, high-risk trials and jury selection, regular jury trials which may see more than 100 jurors being processed in a matter of days, not to mention the regular business activities of all occupants in the courthouse. Consider the proposed expansion in union justice conflicts, which will increase the traffic, employees and persons of the facility by a double factor or more. I would propose the county consider funding a part-time court security officer, possibly up to 19 hours per week, in a non-represented, non-benefited, on-call position. I can provide further details on this matter at your convenience. At the present time, the office of the sheriff is COVID-free. In regards to Operation Stone Garden, we continue to concentrate resources in the Hachita area of Grant County. CBP expects a significant increase in transnational criminal activity as cooler weather approaches. Currently, human trafficking remains the most prevalent issue in our area of responsibility. Federal sources indicate that New Mexico Highways 981 and 146, all are parted in Grant County, are the most active areas of human and other criminal trafficking activities at the current time. CBP also anticipates its own personal shortages in coming months. New Mexico DOT state-funded enforcement operations have commands we are currently engaging in subject activities throughout the county, including Interstate 10. The Sheriff's Office will... For the Grant County Fair, the Sheriff's Office will present at Pete Times for activities at the fair, including traffic enforcement in the surrounding areas. We've been invited to participate with the 9/11 ceremonies this coming Saturday at Western New Mexico University, myself, the undersheriff, and two deputies in our units, and we'll have a display of weapons honoring our 9/11. The Senior Olympics, we did participate, excuse me, this past weekend with events that happened at Gulf Park, and we also did an escort with the Senior Olympics, doing from Silver City to Tri-City and bringing them back in. The Sheriff's Office is currently recruiting certified deputies and will be participating in multiple job fair events in the coming weeks. We plan to attend a large event in Fort Bliss, Texas, which is hosted by the US Army to facilitate the transition of qualified members of the armed forces into civilian life and gain full employment. As a veteran, I hope to join others on my staff who are also vets in attending this event. Veterans speaking directly to veterans and personally aiding and encouraging a successful outcome as a member of the US military move into civilian life and professional careers. And again, thank you, Mr. Zamora, for that input. Fleet issues, we're struggling to actively manage our motor vehicle fleet due to the absence of staff at the road department. We have been forced to manage the day-to-day decisions and arrange repairs for multiple vehicles. This is in addition to the normal scheduled maintenance such as oil filter services to them. A significant amount of time is being spent by my command staff on this, which has been added to their duties. I greatly much appreciate the consideration being given to the development and funding of the professional fleet management and replacement plan through the cap to highway and general budgeting processes. My staff is working in concert to maximize the supplementation to this process and outside funding source to ensure financial efficiency. I'd like to go with some of my stats, and the first page that I gave you is call services for the month of August. The most busiest time was from 11:00 to 11:59 in the daytime. Monday, on Mondays, the percentage was 17.2% calls, dispatch calls, and these are county calls, and then I'll go into Tri-City calls. So dispatch calls outside of the unincorporated county, we were dispatched 696 calls for service, self-initiated 788, for a total of 1,484 calls of service. Now, I kind of explained last commission meeting how even though we respond to Tri-City, it doesn't come out on our own blotters for the Sheriff's Office on CAP. So in Barrett, these are calls that we actually took, not assisted. In Barrett, we took 54 calls of service, which was approximately 27.5 hours in the month of August. Santa Clara, 20 calls at 14.667 hours, 37 calls at 25.21 hours. The total call service including these were 1,605 calls for service. In regards to our civil division for the month of August, orders of protections that were served were 18, notices 61, subpoenas 144, summons 57, RITs 7. Total mileage outside of the county going to DOC or to rehab center, 5,188 miles. Some of the stats that I'd like to bring up from our office. Domestic disturbances were on a rise, and I'll do a comparison from August 1st to the 31st of this year versus last year. For the month of August, we were dispatched 44 times, one self-initiated versus last year of 15 for domestic violations. Livestock, we were dispatched 17, one self-initiated versus last year of 5 and 1. Welker checks, we were dispatched 61, self-initiated 3, last year of 49 and 2. Animal complaints, and this has increased because we do have animal control in our office now. This year was 45 dispatches versus last year of 39 and 1. Unwanted subject calls, this year we were dispatched 24, last year of 10. Suspicious persons, we were dispatched 29, one self-initiated versus last year of 10. Citizens assists, 18 dispatched, 20 self-initiated versus last year of 6 and 13. Vehicle accidents with no injuries, we dispatched 9, self-initiated 1. And vehicle accidents with injuries or fatality were 2. For the year, the Sheriff's Office has investigated 276 crashes in Grant County. The calls in Tri-City are pretty much particular of what I'm reading here, from domestic violations to suspicious persons, unwanted subjects, so forth, and so on, and it goes on. But that is my report. I'm really blessed with my deputies that I have, my staff. I mean, they're doing an outstanding job. We are covering quite a bit of Tri-City, and we're not as much into the Gila, the San Lorenzo, the northern Mimbres, Hila Cliffordas and stuff as much because our calls are being so much concentrated in the mining. So hopefully, eventually here, the mining district will get their officers, and it'll be... I mean, I'm here to support our mining district as much as anyone else, but unincorporated Grant County is our responsibility, as well as all of Grant County, so... I said last time, it's hard to... I mean, I haven't picked up an uncertified, besides my cadets that I got in Western, and as long as we've got these bills coming in and qualifying immunity, I mean, it's a big resistance on people that want to be in law enforcement. So, thank you, and I stand for questions.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Edwards?
Thanks for that very thorough report, Sheriff. When you use the language "human trafficking," will you define what you mean by that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Edwards, on human trafficking, and I'll give you one example of one of our deputies going up there, and actually it was a local person that was arrested during just a regular traffic stop. Ran registration, had a fictitious plate, deputy goes on a traffic stop. Eleven non-legals were stopped with this one driver. Once happens like that with the human smuggling or trafficking, and there was children in the vehicle, of course, CBP, because we were working the Stone Garden, was advised on that. We took the state actions of what we needed to do, and everything else went through the vets. So most... I mean, we're not out on the border, we're not... I mean, for one, Grant County isn't actually on the border. We are cross-commissioned with Luna County and Ibadlo Counties. Most of our stuff is all traffic stops enforcing traffic in our rural Grant County up there, and these traffic stops are actually apprehending criminal activity that's going on up there.
So the reason I ask the question is because, you know, there's so much trafficking happening, and, you know, a lot of it in other places in the country are, you know, young girls from other countries and that kind of thing. And so the reason I asked was because I was curious to know if it was, you know, cross-border stuff happening here or other types of human trafficking. So it sounds like it's mostly cross-border with folks who are entering the country.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Commissioner Salas?
I've got two quick questions, though. When you go out on Stone Garden, you're using it at remote areas, right?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Salas, all our Stone Garden is in remote. So right now, our areas of responsibility are all I-10, Highway 146, 9, and 81, which are all in the southern county in the Hachita area.
So if an officer that's out there, if he needs some sort of backup, another unit, is that a quick response, or...?
Most of the time, there's more than one officer that's going out in an operation. Of course, Stone Garden, Operation Stone Garden is in overtime, so it's coordinated by Lieutenant Burns, and more than likely, we have more than one. But prior to going up there, what we call the bubble, which is a CBP out of Lordsburger Dam, and we call them, so they're tracking us throughout the whole time. We have border patrols frequencies on our units as well, so we know where they're at, and we're actually being assigned by CBP of where they need us at that time, if there's any type of situations or incidents going on. So a response, yes, sir. It's not a... I mean, it could be 10 to 20 minutes pending where one deputy is to the other.
Yeah, I just didn't want it to be, you know, half hour, hour, stuff like that. That worries me for the safety of our officers. And my other question is, with the rise of domestic violence, are you increasingly sending people to El Refugio?
So, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Salas, our policies and stuff, anytime we do get involved in a domestic violence call, we advise them of all the resources that the person can have, and if they're willing to go to El Refugio, we will make that call. The suspect, no one knows where this person is going to be housed at that time, but we take care of it that way. But going through the academy and all our domestic classes that we do go through, and let's put in a police report to whatever services are available in the county that we would help them and support them.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Billings?
Yeah. Thank you for coming, and I'd like to get a copy of your RED report written, if we could do that.
Yes, sir. I can scan it and send it to your email if you want.
Yeah, I'd like that. Thank you. So you brought up quite a few problems, some of them you had solutions to, and I think some of them, like the crisis intervention, we've already taken care of that at least a little bit. And the vehicle problems moved up to number three on the ICIP, but some of the problems actually, I don't have... It's not clear in my mind what the solution is, and I don't... So I don't know if you could meet with the county manager and propose solutions to, you know, what this commission could do to help you. It's my belief that law enforcement is really our number one responsibility in the county that I can think of, is to keep the peace and to help enforce the law. So, you know, I'd like to do what we can do to help you find solutions to these problems that exist. One that comes to my mind is the mining district. You're being... Having so much onerous responsibility in the mining district and then leaving out, you know, some of the other places where you can't. Also, did you mention today how many officers you're short?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Billings, in regards to officers, I am five deputies short.
Okay. And so recently, you and I had a conversation, I don't know if you're ready to talk about that now, about the STEP plan that was instituted, what that did, but now that county-wide employees are going to receive a raise, is that going to include the Sheriff's Office? And if it doesn't, could you explain to us why we need to include the Sheriff's Office in that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Billings, and I've spoken with the managers of Mora about this. I know that the Sheriff's Office has been excluded completely from the STEP plan, except for civilian staff. The STEP plan, when it was originated, deputies coming in from zero to three years have no raise whatsoever. That STEP plan doesn't even help them in any way at all. They're locked in at 1753 is what they're starting paid for deputies are. So the 1.5 that we got a couple of years ago, and now getting this 3%, those same deputies that are under three years still haven't gotten any type of raise because their STEP plan won't kick in until after the third year. So I'm talking with Commissioner Billings, looking at Silver City, Silver City's getting paid at, I believe, 1888 an hour. Barrett just went to $21 an hour with full insurance. So to try to even recruit, if I wanted to recruit, I mean, there's no one to recruit in the mining district, but it's very compatible in Barrett being, and I understand they don't have a STEP plan, but having someone brand-new coming out of the academy at $21 at full percent insurance is what the county pays. I mean, they're pretty much it. Their call volume isn't anything like what the Sheriff's Office is, and it's pretty much, I mean, it's set for them. So speaking with the managers of Mora and Commissioner Billings, I'm not sure if that's something that can be looked at or discussed on, at least. I have my STEP plan moving after the third year with everyone else, does get raises, but the zero to three years, my deputies coming in do not receive a raise whatsoever.
Thank you. Thanks for covering that, yeah. So I don't know where we want to move or what we can do from here, but hopefully there's some ideas.
Commissioner Billings, Commissioners in general, just what Sheriff Gomez was talking about, now, I just want to make it clear for the 3% raise that was given to the county employees a month or two months ago. Now, that part, the Sheriff's Department was not in. So on their STEP plan, they have... In my mind, I picture it like longevity pay in the military. We have a STEP plan, so after a certain amount of years, then you increase a certain amount, and it's not a cost of living raise. And I know it was clear when the resolution was passed by the commission on the county 3% pay raise, it was not a cost of living increase, and the Sheriff's Department was excluded, as well as a handful of other organizations that are funded through a separate item. And so that is Sheriff Gomez's concern, is, you know, everybody received the pay raise, but the deputies did not in there. I don't think there's anything we're going to be able to do about it right now as far as actually having funds to do it. But we will look at the county STEP plan, and while we're doing that, the Sheriff's Department will be part of that. And so we need to consider, not only as experience and longevity develops within an employee, we have to look at... And I think that's what the STEP plan has to be based on, and any cost of living increases for employees just has to be separate from the STEP plan. So, but we will be including the Sheriff's Department and all the county departments in the working group for the STEP plan here.
Okay, just one quick... I know you're trying to move this meeting, but...
Yeah.
So I guess bottom line is, you're... We're going the other way again, so we were 11 deputies short, finally just about hired up, and so the... And so the proof is to me, we're not paying our deputies, at least the beginning ones enough, or we could fill those positions. And somewhere we have to find the money. You know, that, that's a longer discussion for when we have more time, but that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Billings. Any other questions for the sheriff? Sorry, any other questions for the sheriff? Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Gomez.
Thank you.
Going to our assessor, Mr. Tuvia.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, and appreciate these meetings. You guys are really earning your keep, you know, spending all this time. But to lay the rest, you know, in 2021, the tax rates were actually passed this, this Tuesday and by the Board of Commission. Despite by the approval, we've had a couple of questions that were lingering, lingering out there, and it was the increase of the operating rate of Herbie on the non-residential side. We just now received clarification from Jolene Gonzalez in DFA this morning. All is good. The rational changes is the following. By resolution, Herbie non-residential operational rate is capped at 5.225 mils. In prior years, the levy has been lower than, than that, and that was 4.971 mils in the year 2020. While overall non-residential rates in Herbie did not change in the tax year 2021, it is a plus or minus of 1.5%. The state assess saw a significant net new value in new construction nearly over $200,000 in assessed value. The net new is equitable of 12.2%, equivalent of 12.3% in the total non-residential value. The yield control, the yield control formula worked. Its effort of dividing up the meal rates, if it was possible, not the cap at 5.225, it would have actually been higher. So actually with the yield control formula, that actually kept it down to 5.225. So I can, we can actually lay this to rest on what happened in the tax rate in Herbie. Talking about lay the rest, I like to go over my day and to clarify on the cap and so on, my original, my original workouts and everything. If I had this in mind, I can't, don't feel comfortable, but the questions that were asked from Harry, Commissioner Harry Brown about the cap, the statute, it's actually by statute on 736 point, that's 21.2, and actually the New Mexico statute on limitation and increase in evaluation properties. So I just wanted to throw that out there because I, I will be thinking about it tonight and I just don't want to think about it. I just want to make sure that we clarify. So finding out what's being capped and not capped to clarify the residential value rate, residential values will be changed for two reasons. Once again, we talked about reconstruction and once again valuation maintenance and Commissioner Salas will do a little bit more in depth. Valuation maintenance with market impact of the housing values is limited to the maximum of 3% per year. The recap, the residential cap, if 100% of the residential properties were fact capped, it would actually increase the 3% residential valuation each year. However, and that's when I went back to look at the numbers, however, only 43.2% residential properties are currently capped. That means that 56.8% of the residential properties will see no value increase from the year to year. For combined, to verify effect of sales, protests, demolitions, reconstructions, and 2.1% increase on the residential and residual. And once again, Commissioner Brown, I hope you, hope to clarify that because we will come up something and thank you for telling your manager, Samora, that we will have a couple of slides kind of specific. I just had to throw that out there because I did not want to go thinking about this home tonight. So thank you very much for asking the questions. And Commissioner Salas, thank you for bringing up those questions. I would just like to say there was an individual in my office by the name of Doris Sierra. She actually was a temp in the assessor's office and was hired by the county clerk. And thank you very much, Connie Marisa, she's a very good employee. So she's actually moved on over to the county clerk's office and I'm very happy for, for her future on that. We're actually going to be on the field constantly, reviewing, not only reviewing sales, but also doing our agricultural, new construction, our work orders. So we will have employees out in the field diligently for pretty much end of the year. Mr. Tuvia, my chief appraiser, we really need to get these building permits completed so we can actually start closing these permits. She's going to be working quite diligently on those permits also at this time. Come November, December, we're actually going to mail out the notices, not, excuse me, mail out the rendition for personal property, manufactured, excuse me, personal property, agricultural, and that will actually be starting the process all over again so we can be ready to send out the notices of evaluation come April. Yeah, everything else status going to the assessor's office and, and I do thank you for your time. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Tuvia. Any questions? Commissioner Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Assessor. And Vic, your staff, your chief deputy for providing that information, he moved very fast on that. And I just want to summarize my understanding, might help some of my fellow commissioners, and you can correct me if my understanding is wrong, but here's what I got from that, those statistics, that even though in general, property values are going up pretty fast, both nationally and locally, nearly 57% of residential properties are not having any assessed value increase. So that explains how we got to 2.1% on the overall. The math now makes sense. We're left with a question for the future. My question for the future is why are 57% of the properties not increasing at all? I don't expect an answer now, don't even want an answer now. But if we could get some understanding of, of why that's the case, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown. Like I said, I jumped on it the minute we got done with my report. For some reason, I really want to make sure that we can clarify that. Absolutely. Once again, the 56.8% that is not increased in volume to 3%, I will give you a complete breakdown on why and how come. And one of the biggest reasons that I wanted to find out what's being capped, what's not being capped, I had that information in my certification and my, my breakdown statistics on what's being capped and what's not being capped. So thank you very much for bringing that up and you will have a complete description on why the 56.8% is not being capped. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown. Any other questions?
Thank you. No, no other questions. Madam Deputy Clerk, do you have a report? No report from that, or sorry?
No, 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 I was apologizing to you, I wasn't paying attention.
Oh, all right.
Now we're just confused, sorry.
Now we're just confused.
Sorry.
So keep reminding me that this is work session and regular meetings.
Right.
So moving on to next time, will the agenda is the approval of meetings?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the minutes for August 10th work session minutes, August 10th special meeting minutes, August 12th regular meeting minutes, August 24th special meeting minutes, August 30th special meeting minutes.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Edward, second by Commissioner Brown, discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to financial reports, item K, consideration of September 2nd, 2021 expenditure report.
Governor and Commissioners, our period ending September 2nd, 2021, the sum of expenses came up to $3,128,460.8. AP total $2,675,371.69. Payable total $453,088.39, and this covered back pay for pay increases and vacation payout pay period 17 and pay period 18. For our larger expenses exceeding $10,000 from August 6th to September 2nd, 2021, we had a check to Radio Express Fleet Services for $26,357.81 for July 2021 fuel charges, a check to Medina Springer for $15,672.36 for July 2021 legal fees, a check to Grant County Manager's Office for $14,767.27 for July 2021 Code Camino reimbursement for admin fees, a check to Grant County Manager's Office for $11,642.83 for June 2021 Code Camino reimbursement for admin fees, a check for the Mexico Tourism Department for $10,254.50. This is the first half of the tourism digital campaign. A check to Gohan in Houston for $17,501.91 for baton park drainage improvements, a check to Gohan in Houston for $14,804.57 for visual improvement design, a check to Gohan in Houston for $15,684.45 for little walnut improvement design, a check for the Mexico Tourism Department for $10,254.50, and this is the second half of the tourism digital campaign. A check to Grant County Chamber of Commerce, $13,333.34 June and July 2021 management fees, a check to Trinity Services Group, $23,248.42 July 2021 inmate bills, BOK, oh, sorry, BOAM for $745,609.84, this is for the Geo Bond Series 2019, BOAM for $418,159.84, this is for the Geo Refunding Series 2014, a check to Southwest Solid Waste Authority, $55,897.65 July 2021 tipping fees, I'm sorry, a check to Ascent Aviation for $18,17.15 for jet fuel, a check to Ascent Aviation, $17,394.72 for jet fuel, a check to GT Distributors for $11,98.60 for ammunition, a check to Caterpillar Financial Services, $11,535.93 for the motor grader lease contract, a check to Municipal Emergency Depository, $163,530 for SCBA's for the Tyrone Voluntary Buy Department, and a check to the Town of Silver City, $12,660.48 to reinforce the COVID-19 vaccine campaign. I stand for any questions.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the September 2nd, 2021 expenditure report as presented by Veronica.
Yeah, I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Edward, second by Commissioner Brown, discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
And well done, Brian.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business here, under item L, consideration of Code Camino's fiscal year 2022 budget.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Hold on. Let me remember word.
Right.
I told you to keep me on track.
I can't keep you on track if I'm not on track.
Good morning. It's okay. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I don't know if you've had time to review the budget I submitted to you. I'll make it quick, just, just a few things. In my FY '22 budget, the award amount was increased by $65,465 over what we were awarded in fiscal year '21. There's only a few mentionable increases in the line item amounts that I wanted to go over with you. One of the things is I've budgeted for an increase on the line item in our mobile radio services. And that is to add Verizon services, which is a push-to-talk to replace our old mobile radios on our buses. This is definitely an improvement in, in safety for us as we have a lot of dead areas currently and Verizon services will be eliminating those dead areas. And we will also be adding front or forward-facing and rear-facing cameras on all of our buses, real-time tracking, GPS, we'll be able to monitor speed, location, quite a few other things. It also is going to allow us to have much better dispatch software than what we have right now. We're currently using Excel spreadsheets. So this is going to give us upgraded dispatch software for, for our demand service for sure. And the other increases I wanted to go over with you is in salaries. I did put in for a 5% increase for my drivers. They're currently making, non-CDL drivers are making under $12 per hour and CDL drivers are just making over $12 an hour. They haven't had an increase since 2018. I know this is a bit above the cost of living, the standard increase, but I feel with, with the current situation, they've worked the front lines during the pandemic, I would really like to award them this increase to get them above or at $12 an hour at least. The other, the other thing is I put in for a 4% increase for our three members of my admin staff. That will get us up to the mid-range of our salary ranges. And again, we haven't had increases since 2018 as well. Other than that, I did want to say none of these increases will impact the county budget at all. This is 100%, well, not 100%, but it's grant-funded. It does not go above the cash match that, that we ask from the counties and the cities that we serve. So it's not going to impact the county at all.
Thank you for, for clarifying that because we had that question a few days back with your budget increasing and all that, if county's percentage was going to increase. So thank you for clarifying that to the commissioners.
One request, Kim, in the future, if we could see this very clear budget with the previous year's actuals, that would be super helpful.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's, it's very close.
Yeah, I can, I can send that to you this year if you would like.
Great. That would be great. Thank you, Kim.
Sure.
Commissioner Billings? Do you have a question about the county map? So that hasn't changed from last year, the $80,000, is that what?
It hasn't changed for the last several years. I don't know the exact date, but I want to say it hasn't increased since 2013.
Oh.
And I don't anticipate any increases in, in the next several fiscal years. So on your agenda today is, is our resolution for financial commitment for fiscal year '23. That doesn't increase, that's still at the $80,000.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Edward?
So I'd like to just share with you a little bit of information that I elicited from the board meeting yesterday. I had the same questions about the budget and my question was, you know, if you give a raise this year, it's a reoccurring expense. And so how does that work in this process? And Kim was very clear in the board meeting yesterday that, that ongoing expense, so her, the grant amount that she gets from DOT is based on what she spent the previous year. And so that increase is covered by that increase in the grant funding. And so there's never any point at which the county would then have to make up a difference because that's how the funding works with DOT. Did I explain that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Awesome. That means you explained it really well to me yesterday.
It's actually kind of hard to believe there's a state program like that. They must have some limit.
It's federal.
DOT Fed, it's, it comes straight to us from the state, not through the state. And they don't have a limit, I mean, if we just start paying 25 bucks an hour, which?
Well, that one, I think it's reasonable.
Right.
So at some point, you're able to figure out the limits to their generosity.
Right.
Well, and part of the reason why they haven't gotten raises in the past is because they declined to allow them. This time they are allowing them and then we'll cover it with future.
I can tell you, schools and school bus contractors have had to increase wages quite a lot, well more than 5%. So I'm not at all surprised.
To get people off.
Yeah, because we have a shortage of drivers as well as many other positions in the economy right now.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Salas.
What did you say your CDL drivers were, were at?
So currently they are at. So currently, they are at...
A little over 12.
12, 12 per hour. With the increase, it would bump them up to 12, 73 per hour.
And to me, CDL drivers are in demand, and that seems pretty low.
We're paying 16, 18.
Are you, are you, sorry, I was distracted. Are you being able to get, do you have staff? Are you fully staffed?
I'm currently two staff members short for Cantinas. Other than that, we are fully
Any further questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the Core Camino's Fiscal Year 2022 Budget.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion.
Thank Commissioner Edwards for her service on that board.
Yes, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Still under new business, moving on to item M, Consideration and Approval of Proposed Settlement Agreement, Grant County, New Mex, in the New Mexico State Revenue Department, Case D-202-CB-201808036. Does anybody have anything on that?
I don't know if we're getting a presentation, or if we should just move for approval.
Welcome any questions, but I guess just to kind of fill you in on the process, we did receive from Kennedy and Gallagher, who was representing the New Mexico Municipal League, including the county, all the counties in Mexico, in the dispute against the Tax and Revenue Department. And so yesterday, we received the approval of mediation settlement agreement, which Commissioners of Morin will execute. And then we also have the release of claims, which will also be executed here. So really, at this point, what's going to happen is that next month, after we return the release and the approval, the funds will be distributed from Tax and Rev to the county at the regular time that distribution usually come to the county. And that amount is going to be three hundred and, well, it's three hundred and six thousand dollars. And of that amount, there's going to be about $33,000 deducted for the contingency fee that will go to Kennedy and Gallagher.
And there's some deducted as well for gross receipts tax?
Correct, yes. There is a percentage.
Which I have to say surprises the heck out of me. Is that gross receipts tax on the fee to the lawyers? Is that what that is?
Well, you know, I'm not quite sure where that comes from. I could find out, but at this point, I'm not quite sure why they're charging GRT on top of that. But it's not included in that contingency fee, so it's over and above that amount.
Okay, so that's my best guess, that it's the GRT on their fee.
Right. And I guess just so I'm clear, so the lump sum is coming to the county, and then the county will have to separately reimburse Kennedy and Gallagher.
Okay, okay.
Mr. Chair, would we approve the proposed settlement agreement between Grant County et al. and the New Mexico Taxation Revenue Department?
Second.
Second by motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Brown, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Moving on to agreements, Consideration Agreement Number 8-21-33.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve Agreement Number 8-21-33 Subgrant Agreement with Conswelo Paul in the amount forty-four thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars as authorized under the New Mexico Behavior Health Services Division Fiscal Year 2022 Rise Grant Agreement.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Billings, discussion.
Tim, that is for the therapist that was funded under that grant, correct?
Yes, in, I'll verify, but that's what I believe this individual is for.
Yes, yes, that's correct. It's for the licensed alcohol and drug counselor.
Yeah.
That's grant money, huh? That's grant money?
Yes.
Yes. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if you have a word?
Yes.
I would like a few-minute break. It's possible that the next discussion is somewhat lengthy, and I'd rather not miss some of it, but I need to, I need to go.
Yes, let's go five-minute recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're back in session. It's moving on to resolutions, and it's Consideration of Resolution
Mr. Chair, with second discussion, I move to approve R-2140, a resolution amending and restating a prior resolution relating to proposal of investor revenue bonds entitled to Grant County relative to the Great Divide Bank.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Edwards, discussion.
Is this to be only questions? Did you want to make any presentation?
We don't have a presentation at this time. We're happy to answer any questions from the Commission.
Thank you.
I do have a few, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
Thanks. First of all, and this may have, you know, my brainwiser invented this, but didn't you come to us a month ago and say you would now like to base payments on actual generated energy rather than capacity?
In the exchanging of drafts of the resolution, we proposed that revision, yes.
Okay, so it wasn't at the meeting that was exchanged at that. Somewhere I did read that, though.
That is correct.
But that is no longer part of this resolution?
No, county's council rejected that request, that revision.
And is that based on statute, that rejection?
No. Customarily, the way the pilot is determined, it can be done several ways, but usually you see per-installed megawatt.
Yeah.
But we suggested to have capacity be the defining factor, because our output, our capacity down at the grid is not changing. We're capped at 252 megawatts. So we thought, you know, to keep everything kind of consistent in terms of the size of the pilot, making the change to output put on the grid seemed logical. And then county's bond council said, nope, we're going to stick with per-installed megawatt.
Okay. The bond council said that, not the county attorney.
Not the county attorney, no.
If Louis C. could ask Speaker, but what I'm tracking, Louis and I had spoke about it, and the last resolution that the Commission had seen had it stated as it is right now. And what we didn't want to change is what the Commission had already once approved and seen once already, and throw in a separate situation. And so that's why we said, let's go with it. And if the Commission chooses to change that, we can change that. If Louis, you could correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe?
That's Chairman, members of the Commission, Mr. Zamora. That's correct. The version of the injunction resolution that was included, that was adopted in 2018, didn't provide for structuring that goes exactly the way it appears in the resolutions today. There have been some proposals by council for the developer to change that approach to reflect, you know, the output that actually gets put into the grid. In my discussions with manager, Managers Zamora, we anticipated that changing the structure that way could have a detrimental effect on the folks that ultimately get paid to the county. So we rejected that proposed change at that point. But of course, if the county Commission wants to take a different approach or discuss an alternative approach, it certainly is free to do that.
Okay, I have no need to change the approach. From a county perspective, I think the certainty that comes with a set capacity makes a lot of sense. In hand, I would imagine it could either have hurt us or helped us to go with actual production. But I prefer a constant predictable revenue over a potentially variable revenue, and let the company reap the benefits if it's able to produce more. So I'm fine with what you've ended up here. But I do have another question related to that. Is there a statutory amount per-installed megawatt that needs to be put in as part of the pilot? Or is that also the product of negotiation?
Chairman, Chairman and Commissioner Brown, you're correct. There is no statutory requirement as to what that amount be if it's subject to negotiation between the county and the company.
So as I understand it, the statutory requirement from HB 105 doesn't set a floor for the amount per megawatt of installed capacity. It just specifies how the payment should be divvied up among school districts. Is that correct?
Chairman, Commissioner Brown, that's correct. It doesn't specify the amount. It just says, it provides a formula by which the split, if you will, between the amount that goes to the county and the amount, the amount that goes to the school district is established. And it also establishes a minimum that whatever that payment is can't be less than what the county, or the school district is receiving in property tax payment in the year prior to the year in which the bond are issued.
Perfect. And when you say was receiving, you mean was receiving by the lands that are affected, that are being removed from the property tax rolls, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a number, Mr. Manager, for what that property value was, or is this year even? Because of course, they have not been removed from the rolls yet.
Not at this time, we do not.
But much of that land is grazing land, correct?
That is correct.
Likely to be assessed at $5.40 per acre, because that's a statutory requirement for grazing land.
Correct.
My guess is the amount is tiny, and that therefore, the requirements of state statute for the pilot would be correspondingly very small, and that everything we're talking about negotiating with Great Divide is going to pretty much be above and beyond those requirements.
That is, that is my assumption right now. I agree.
Based on that, I would like to continue with my, my desire, I guess, that we do this fairly, and I define fairly, I realize this is open to debate, as equal per-student payments for all public schools in the county. So having said it, what my desire is for this, my vision is we have a clause in the eventual ordinance, not in this resolution, in the eventual ordinance that meets state requirements for the pilot, where that makes sure that the school districts are held harmless by removing property taxes from the rolls, divides the payment equally between the two school districts as required by law. And then we have another agreement, which will be 95% of the payment, I believe, roughly, maybe 90%, that serves to balance out the payments so that it's fair among all public school students within the county. That's my proposal. And specifically, I have one amendment I would like to make to this resolution, and I've got some draft language. It would go in paragraph G of Section 2 on page 4. That paragraph currently says, "The company has proposed to make payments in lieu of taxes based on the megawatts of installed generating capacity of the project to the allocate catered between the county, the Silver Consolidated School District, and the Co-Braid Consult, which is actually Co-Braid Independent School District," I think that's a typo there, "as required, blah, blah, blah." Can we add, "The company has also agreed to consider additional payments to public schools within the county with the goal of equalizing the per-student amounts of total
That's a step beyond the requirements of the statute.
Correct.
I would think Louis or Catherine would, could opine on the, is that, you know, does it cross the statute?
But I'm wanting to know that the company is agreeing to consider these additional payments. So set the basis for continuing negotiations.
So Commissioner Moran, if I understand you correctly, you're asking if we would agree to consider payments beyond the 1750 per-megawatt installed?
I am not necessarily in agreement. The 1750, by, if we meet the statutory requirements, I believe that would probably end up like a dollar per installed megawatt hour, leaving 1650 available to partition in another way, not according to HB 105.
From our perspective, the project's perspective, the project company's perspective, we are agnostic as to how that 1750 number is divided amongst the parties that would receive it. So we are absolutely willing to consider, as you have proposed, language that you've suggested.
Beautiful.
And so then what would happen is, this resolution only says that we're going to consider that in the future.
Correct.
So all, it just means that the door is open.
Right.
What happens later, happens later. But the door is open now rather than closed, which it would be if we passed it like this.
That's, my fear is that it would be considered closed at that point, and this would keep it open. And of course, these final terms are going to go in the ordinance that we end up agreeing to, not this resolution.
So, I mean, I have two issues here in what you're talking about, and I still haven't had, I haven't been able to get my hands on it, and I've asked for it. And, but there was, my understanding part of it is that the Silver School Boards, along with Charlene, passed the resolution as to some of this. I would like to see that before we add any other thing to this, because I'd like to honor whatever, if it is true, whatever discussion she had. Now, I don't know how our county manager feels about this, but, I mean, to me, this resolution is part eight to this whole thing. I don't think any of the Commissioners on this board is going to prevent us from discussing further down the road, where we have more information as far as the distribution of it, and how it's going to be distributed through the county and the schools and so forth, so.
I tend to agree. Should we ask legal counsel if that's the case?
Can I, I need a little bit of clarity before we go on. So what we're talking about is there'll be a set amount that goes to each school district, and then in addition, some more money that could go, that's dependent on student enrollment.
That's the way I see it, the instruction. Where the set amount is the amount that that district would have earned from the property taxes that are now being taken off the rolls. That's the purpose of HB 105, to make sure that districts don't suffer when electric generating projects are built using an IRB in the county. So.
Well, you know, I would, I would certainly welcome that the opportunity is there, but there would be plenty of discussion before we did that.
I agree, there should be that discussion. I would note, Mr. Chair, that the agreement, the resolution passed by the Silver School Board was before HB 105. I think it's invalidated now by HB 105. That resolution would have given all the money to Silver and more to Co-Braid.
See, and I haven't seen it, that's what I'm asking. I've been wanting to get a copy of it. I understand, but, I mean, to me, right now, where I'm at, instead of getting into the weeds with all this and who's going to get what money and how and when and where, I think, to me, the way I want to go with this resolution is the way it's presented. And then step B, we can sit down and have this conversation. And I can guarantee our Commissioners aren't going to turn a blind eye as to what you're proposing, have that discussion so we can get this going, and we can get to Part B.
Agree. And can we ask legal counsel if we can just pass this and then do what Commissioner Brown is proposing later?
Louis, are you tracking all this?
I'm, Chairman, Commissioner, Managers Zamora, yes, I've been tracking it, and yes, I think it's totally fine to approve the resolution as it appears now, and then to make sure that the details, if you will, as to the amount and, you know, the structuring of the payments, leading back to future discussions and memorialization in the ordinance and or bond documents that get approved later is fine. I would also note that I did make one minor revision in the resolution that appeared from last year, where I basically said, you know, at a minimum, the payments would include those, those payments to Silver and Co-Braid based on the statute that's provided in the statute. those payments to Silver and Cobre based on the statute that's provided in the statute, leaving room that that could be, there could be something in addition to that, to Commissioner Brown's concerns. And a couple of other things that I wanted to make sure didn't get past your head, there was some discussion about this, but some changes that occurred between last month and this month was the part max got increased to from 400 million to 500 million. And also recommended to reflect that the project will include, or can include, wind, solar, and battery, battery, battery energy or electricity.
And just to be clear, the wording that we have here is not in any way preventing the commission from deciding to take a per student or restrict us in any way on what the commission wants to do as far as distributing it to the schools in general, not school districts only, but the schools in general.
It does not limit that at all. The resolution is not binding in terms of the terms of, it's all it is, it's an expression of the county's intent to move forward with those negotiations and structuring of that deal. And, you know, it's listed to that point that, you know, if the county should not be satisfied with the proposed terms of any deal, they're free to reject the adoption of any bond ordinance or continue further discussions later on. This does not bind the county to any sort of course of action at this time.
Is it okay if we call for a vote then?
Yeah, I guess I don't understand the objection to including language that the company has agreed to, but if for some reason you objected that, I'll take your verbal assurances that we're all open to this.
And it's public. The verbal assurances are public.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, that's sort of, I mean, that's sort of like a little blow to us right here, like, not trusting your commissioners to, after I said it in public on TV, is, is, yeah, you know, we get through step A, we'll all sit down and say, because I'm like you, you know, do all schools deserve, yes, but right now, probably wouldn't be good to sit here and, with this piece of it, and hash that out. I mean, we can have another meeting and decide how do we want to distribute this. And I'd be more than happy to do. I'll put it on the agenda for you if you want, when it comes up. Any further discussion?
Just so I'm clear, the resolution you are contemplating adopting is what has been circulated in the meeting packet?
Yes.
As written?
Yes, sir. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thanks.
Thanks for your patience.
Maybe, of course, when is the next meeting in October?
The way we're going, probably in a few minutes.
We could send you that and send you the dates.
It's the 14th, right?
14th.
I've got it as the 14th.
That's right. After we get through here today.
Yes.
That's funny.
So, Tim, in your planning of the agenda for the October 14th meeting, I am forewarning you that you should have a CEO candidate interview at 1 o'clock that day.
Okay.
Just so you know.
Wasn't that moved tonight? Which one was moved tonight?
The one next week.
The one next week. I gave you the wrong info. I thought it was the 14th too, and I forgot to tell you to call you. That's September 14th.
Correct, yeah. And believe me, I've had plenty of trouble with that as well.
So moving on to the next item of the agenda, it's going to be a consideration of Resolution R. I'm going to read the whole thing so I can make the motion. Is that okay?
Sure.
So, consideration of Resolution R 21-44, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund Loan Grant Agreement by and between New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County, New Mexico, for the benefit of, for the benefit of Arenas Valley, in a total amount of $275,000, evidencing an obligation of the borrower, borrower, oh God, borrower guarantee to utilize the loan grant amount solely for the proposal financing the cost of design of the old Arenas Valley Road and solely in the manner described in the loan grant agreement, providing for the pledge and payment of the loan amount of 27,500 solely from one-eighth of a percent of county local option grocery receipts tax and acceptance of grant amount of 247,500, certifying that the loan grant amount together, wow, with other funds available to the borrower guarantee is sufficient to complete the project, approving the form of and other details concerning the loan grant agreement, ratifying actions heretofore, taking, repelling all actions inconsistent with this resolution and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the loan grant agreement. So basically, Priscilla, real quick, well, I'll make a motion to what I just said.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, help me out a little bit on this, Priscilla, real quick.
So this is the Colonius money that we were awarded for the Arenas Valley Road for Design, and the total award is 275,000. The county's match portion is 27,500.
Okay. And we do have that money?
Yes, this was already budgeted. In my department's budget, I have match monies, and this has already been budgeted.
Okay. Any further discussion, Commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Wow, how come our resolution's just been being delayed?
I don't think we have to read every word of it, actually.
Consideration of Resolution R-21-45. Go ahead, Priscilla, real quick on this. This is phase three of North Hurley?
Yes, this is a Colonius award for design of North Hurley Road Phase Three, and the total award is 150,000, and the county's match is 15,000.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve R 21-45, resolution similar to the one we just approved, set for North Hurley in the amount of 150,000, the county's match being $15,000.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Brown. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Moving on to item R, consideration of Resolution R 21-46, a resolution adopting an infrastructure capital improvement plan for Grant County?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the ICIP as presented.
Okay, second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion, my computer went out, but did you guys see it? It looks the way it is.
It's just matching up to my notes, if you don't mind giving me a moment.
And, Priscilla, can you talk on the regional dispatch?
Yes, so the dispatch, they cannot put in their own ICIP, so it has to go through the county. So speaking with Priscilla Lucero, we added two projects to the very end for equipment and for facility. They would go after the funds themselves, they just need to be on somebody's ICIP, and we put them on the county. They're in dire need of equipment, apparently, and that's why last minute, we put them on this year's.
And those ended up at the very end?
Yes.
And that meets their needs?
It does, as long as they're on the, as long as they're on the list, it doesn't matter which priority you're.
So basically, hopefully, we put it on the list, they can go up there and do their own negotiation and doing that for that.
Yes. They just need to be on somebody's ICIP. They can't do their own.
I have a question. Item four, which is something we substituted in on Tuesday, so there hasn't been much time to think about it, is Grant County Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan. It's shown as 200,000. I guess I'm wondering how we came up with that estimate. Is that just because that's what we had for the Trails and Open Space Plan?
Yes, that's how I came up with that estimate because that's how much the Trails and Open Space Master Plan was allocated.
I suspect this would be a lot less expensive. I would think 100,000.
That was my hope also, that this would be less.
And it may be, but since these numbers are just estimates, we don't have, we're not glued to this amount, so.
Good answer.
You're not glued to it?
Well, you know. We're not.
Yeah, and the one that I think would be way, way less is the Fairgrounds Plan.
Right.
Because that's not countywide, that's, you know, that's a very focused.
Well, I think that one, in discussion on Tuesday, it is called a master plan, but it's still going to be, the scope of work is still plan, design, construct, equip. That way, in case there is any money, I mean, the master plan is going to be the first priority, but if we do get money for improvements, it's still in the scope of work.
Has the whole language.
That's the same as the Vuitton Memorial Park improvements. It's plan, design, construct, equip. So we can start with a plan first, but we can include all of the other improvements if needed.
Until the money is spent.
Correct.
It makes me feel very secure to know that staff is thinking better than I am, so thank you.
Any, we do have a motion, right?
Yes.
I asked for a little bit of time just to compare, if you don't mind.
No, go ahead. I'm still trying to figure out this.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. That looks great. Thank you for your work.
Does it look? Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item S, consideration of Resolution R-21-47, a resolution adopting an infrastructure improvement plan for Moomis Valley and Heda Centers?
I move to approve.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Edwards. Discussion.
And this is the same thing, right? They'll do their own advocacy for these?
Yes, so HMS manages this ICIP, they handle both of them. The county just has to pass the resolution for it to go up to the state.
Do we know how they're planning to fund the solar panels? Both centers have that on the air, which is great to see. Did they already have a plan? Are they thinking Catalletti? Are they thinking some kind of P and M branch or something?
I am not sure.
Okay. All right, well, it's great to see those on there.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries. Item T, Resolution Number R 21-48, resolution of support and financial commitment for Corre Caminos?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve Resolution Number R 21-48.
Second. Second by Commissioner Salas. Discussion, that's our percentage, it hasn't gone up, we're just, because of the new fiscal year, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any further discussion, Commissioners?
No, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. If I can have a motion to recess as a Grant County Board of Commissioners and convene as a Grant County Healthcare Claims Board.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Salas, second by Commissioner Billings. Discussion. Okay, so, all those in favor? Motion carries. So we need to consider the House Care's claim for August 2021 in the amount of $112.96.
I move that we approve those claims in the amount of $112.96.
Second by Commissioner Edwards. It's the lowest I've ever seen.
That's great.
Yeah, so, any discussion? I guess I should have said that and then discussed it. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? If I can have a motion to adjourn as a Grant County Healthcare's Claim Board and reconvene as a Grant County Board of Commissioners? I'll second. We have a motion by Commissioner Billings, second by Commissioner Ponce. Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, so we're back as Grant County Commissioners. Next item is the Commissioner Reports. Commissioner Billings.
Very quickly, because I know we have to get to the hospital, but I was glad that Jason brought up the VSO officer. I was in communication with Rebecca Dow this morning, and she's wondering if, we're not going to need help pretty soon if they can't get this, it's been dragging on for two years, so hopefully they re-advertise the position, they'll get somebody to file, they'll get it done in a timely manner. Yeah, that's, I think I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Commissioner Salas, motion. Commissioner Edwards.
So I know that the posting went out yesterday.
Great, thank you.
So, yep, that's it for me. Thank you.
Commissioner Brown.
I'll vent as little as I can, given the time pressure, but I did vent a little bit. We passed a resolution proclamation about Patriot Day in which we cited the effect of 9/11 down near the World Trade Center towers and the bravery of the people who provided service that day, the folks who worked in, or worked in those buildings, the folks who rushed in to help, first responders. All told, of course, just under 3,000 people died that day, several thousand have died since due to health effects of having helped out and having been there. We are seeing every two days with COVID, the same number of deaths, 3,000 deaths every two days. And yet, as we, with one hand, as a society, command of the people who showed tremendous bravery on 9/11, lots of folks in our society are unwilling to make the small sacrifice of wearing a mask and getting vaccinated for the common good, and this strikes me as extreme hypocrisy. Bringing it a little closer to home in our county, apparently we have 50% of our detention center employees still unvaccinated. I don't know how we can claim to be offering a safe environment for our detainees when our employees refuse to become vaccinated. This is now fully approved by the FDA, at least in the case of Pfizer, soon to be the other two as well. This is absolutely not an experimental procedure or experimental injection. This is the same now as other vaccinations we've all had. I don't know about my fellow Commissioners, but I'm ready to require vaccination among our employees in order to ensure that we provide a safe environment for all Grant County residents, including detainees. That's it for my comments. Thank you.
Don't thank you, Commissioner Brown. I think, yeah, what you said there, thank you. I don't know if our county manager can think about some of the stuff that you said, maybe look at something and get with you and get with the commission on his thoughts on this down the road and do that and see what we can do.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Brown, one of my notes was that, exactly. What I am going to do is look into it and I'm going to personally go down and talk to the detention officers as well, because we have the same issue in the Army. There's a lot of people that did not get vaccinated right away, but as you engage and as senior leaders engage them and provide them with a quick option to have a vaccination clinic right there, right after you're talking, that seemed to help us to improve our numbers and having the right people to explain, you know, what are the facts on vaccination. So I took a note and I'm going to look into it, and so I'm going to work to improve the situation voluntarily right now.
Well, I greatly appreciate your leadership in that regard and your experience in the Army where eventually they did require it, as I recall.
Yep.
I think you're probably correct that that approach is best to do first, before mandates. And perhaps you could bring maybe Margaret Diaz, I don't know who might be the best messenger, to speak to the safety of the vaccine along with you if you make such a presentation. Thank you.
Well, I think Margaret Diaz is widely regarded as the person in the county that has been responsible for making sure that as many people are vaccinated as there are. So I think that's a great idea.
Thank you. So continuing here on my comments, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Billings, for what you said during the proclamation for September 11th and for putting me there. Thank you. and putting me there. Thank you. Thank you, I really appreciate that. So, I guess this will be sort of still on my comments, real quick. I would like to see, I don't know what your schedule is, your county manager, but I'd like to see us go into recess, and come back later, and go into executive session. Madam Deputy Clerk, if you can have Mr. Robert around to do roll call, and we will notify him when we get done. We have a meeting at 1:00 at Hila Regional. Soon as we get back, should be, I don't think it's going to take the two hours. Is it up there? Or is it? Well, anyway, at 3:00, we should be back somewhere close to 3:00.
Mr. Chairman, somebody correct me if I'm wrong, but, because at this point, we won't have any actual decisions made during the executive session, but I'll get your guidance, and we can package this up. And so, maybe we don't need Robert to film anything?
No, I'm not talking about, we can cut Ben loose, but our clerk's office is our legal, she makes it, she makes us legal. So we have to have a roll call, and we go into executive session, so forth, so on. And then we have to get to the times, probably now the time we went in, the roll call, and then the time we leave executive session. So we're good, so we stay legal.
Understood, correct.
So Ben, we could probably cut loose, because we have no action item. It's discussion.
Yeah.
You guys, the commissioners agree with that?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay, so what I'm going to do is, I'm going to go ahead and call it a recess. Or do we have to vote on it?
Do we have a motion?
Do we not?
Maybe we should just be.
I don't think you need a motion for recess.
I don't think we do, so. Okay, we're recessed.